Hi, I'm Lynn Gray, Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board. I want to welcome you to Hillsborough County Public Schools. We serve more than 200,000 students. That includes children in preschool through our adults in our workforce program.
Hi, I'm Dr. Stacy Hahn, the Board Vice Chair. Our district is the seventh largest in America, and our team is made up of more than 24,000 people working at nearly 250 sites across the county.
We are diverse and dedicated. Our board meetings are held in our board auditorium on select Tuesdays at 4:00 PM. The best way to serve our students and our community is to involve you, the public, in what we do.
You are welcome to email or meet with any of our board members and follow our district on social media. Board meetings are covered live by Hillsborough Schools TV on Spectrum Cable Channel 635 and Frontier Cable Channel 32. Meetings are streamed on our website at hillsbrowsschools.org. Closed captioning is provided on all broadcasts, and past meetings are available in our online archives.
We are interested in what the public has to say. We'll include time for audience comments before we address our business items. Our agenda and any supporting materials can be viewed online in advance. They're posted seven days before each meeting on our website at hillsbrowsschools.org.
Our vision is preparing students for life, and that means all students every day. Todos los estudiantes todos los dias. Thank you for your interest in education. With your help, we're making decisions that shape our communities beautifully.
Good afternoon, everyone. The board meeting of September 21st, 2021 is now called to order. Member Hahn will now lead us in a moment of silence, followed by a video from our first grade dual-language students from Ruskin Elementary, Ms. Salgado, who will recite the Pledge of Allegiance in Spanish and English in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. We are excited to announce we have several students here, three to be exact, in attendance that will be reciting the Pledge of Allegiance along with the video and along with co-chair member Hahn. So, Member Hahn?
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, you all, you're on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Me rata a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de America y a la república que representa una nación bajo Dios, indivisible con libertad y justicia para todos. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to recognize you, and here goes. First, I know you have a wonderful principal in Rebecca Salgado. Thank you. It looks like Mom, Mom might be here too, but let me first recognize the students. Victoria, Liza, I'm sure, okay. You want to wave?
Wave, yeah.
Oh, what a good wave. Yay. And then Kaylee Cruz. Hi, Kaylee. Hi. And then we have Bianca Salgado. Any relation there? And which?
Senora Perez.
Oh, Senora Perez, thank you. You do such a great job, and dual language is so telling. So, thank you for being our guests, and we are just thrilled. You made our evening. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good job, lady.
Okay, back to business, withdrawn items. We have one withdrawn item today, 1105, which states, "Options for requiring the state to release the American Cares Act funds intended for local use," and that has been withdrawn. And, Board Members, I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. I have a motion by Member Perez and a second by Member Combs. Will there be any discussion? Please vote when your lights are on. Thank you, Board Members. It's unanimous. We have two sets of minutes to be approved today. July 27, 2021, the school board workshop, and September 9, 2021, the school board meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes. I have a motion by Member Perez, and I have a second by Member Combs. Will there be any discussion? Seeing none, please vote when your lights appear. Thank you, Board Members. Board Members, I'd like to go over the format of today's meeting. For precautionary measures, we are limiting attendance to 50 at this time, and we are practicing social distancing as much as possible. So, we ask that guests in the boardroom keep one chair open between families. As a reminder, we are a nonpartisan board who believe all children can be empowered to learn, to succeed, and our decisions will be made with that understanding. That is the board's moral imperative, and Board Members, we have it right now, right in front of you on your screen. To pave the way for efficient and effective agenda statements and/or questions, Board Members will have three minutes to speak with 30 seconds for final thoughts. Afterward, the superintendent can request, can respond to your request. If you have further questions, you're asked to get back in the queue. Member Hahn, will you now read the board guidelines?
Thank you, yes. As we begin this afternoon's meeting, let me quickly review the format of our school board meetings. Please silence all electronic devices. There are speakers in the room behind me that allow board members to hear the meeting upon stepping away from the dais. This meeting can be viewed with closed captioning on the live webcast, on cable TV, and on video monitors here in the auditorium. It can also be viewed with closed captioning in the online video archive.
Thank you, Member Hahn. And we have two items scheduled for time certain. We have a 5:01 PM public hearing on the adoption of new and revised policies. And secondly, at 6:00 PM, we have employee input. And now we'll go to public comment. But before that, I do think that Member Snively has a quick announcement. Member Snively?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we start public comment, I just wanted to take a moment to introduce a very special person in our audience today. I'd like to introduce Rachel Stutler. She is, there's Rachel, she is our intern for, from USF. Rachel is interning with the University of South Florida's Legislative Internship Program with, with my office for the next semester, this semester. Rachel is originally from Jacksonville. She's a senior, double majoring in International Studies and Professional Writing, and she's excited to be here and learn about local policy and how we can benefit Tampa Bay's youth. So, thank you, Rachel, for being an intern, and we look forward to working with you this semester.
Thank you.
And you can clap, it's okay.
Oh, okay, we're gonna clap. That's what I call real recognition.
Thank you.
And we are a little jealous because Member Snively always gets the best interns, and we are still wanting to know her secret, so enjoy. Let's go to public comment now, and here are just a few considerations. The board welcomes comments from citizens and values your input to the board. In order to provide the most comprehensive response to your comments, our staff will follow up with you and will keep our board informed about the responses. Our school board respects the public's right to speak to the board, and we appreciate you taking your time to be here. However, it is requested when you address the board comments, excuse me, when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against a board member or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. Any behavior intended to interrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be allowed. Our civility policy is in place. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. As a reminder of our way of work, we have allotted 45 minutes for public comment. Now, today, it looks like, if you all don't mind, and I'll ask the board first, but Board Members, do you mind if I switch it from two minutes each to three minutes, since we don't have that many? Is that okay? Do I have consensus? Okay, so, public comment has been extended to three minutes each, and you'll see a red light at 30 seconds right before you should end. So, now I will call up the first speakers. And this is a good afternoon, and I won't get into evening until later. So, good afternoon, Bill Call, Paula Castano, Damaris Bridges, Veronica McDonald, Adilia Phillips.
Good afternoon, I'm Bill Call. I would have done this on my phone, but about this time every day, I get a text from my kid's high school that another kid's gone home with COVID, and I didn't want that to interrupt my script, so it's on paper. I did come to talk about our governor's intentional snail's pace disbursement of ESER funds in a time when we really need those, but however, I do, after following up on some concerns from board members today about mask bullies that were tweeted by Marlene Sokol, I just, I want to take a moment to thank you for standing strong on the mask mandate. Yesterday, we received notice that our 11-year-old was close to a student with COVID-19 proximity, but because both were properly masked and doing the right thing, she gets to stay in school where she belongs instead of another 10-day vacation. And I'm so grateful for that. So, I just want to encourage all of you to, please, those of you who are, to keep standing up to the real bullies of ignorance, fake patriotism, and thinly veiled partisanship. I so appreciate that. Back to the ESER funds, I'm just curious, how are we fighting for those? I mean, whose hair is on fire demanding funds to hire back teachers and staff so classrooms are adequately staffed? Again, my daughter, and this is real life, just got two new teachers this week. How, how are we making sure that our buses are going to run on time and facilities are maintained? How are we fighting for the funds for wraparound services that private charter schools do not provide? They will not provide them. I know firsthand, when I've inquired, they will refer back to the county for ESE services, and yet they are so happy to take our ESER funds. How is that, and how are you fighting for these funds to be dispersed to our county? How is that happening? I just want to see that we're fighting, not a well-worded email or, eh, we'll look into that. And I own my own business, and if somebody owed me $450 million, there would be more than a strongly worded email. So, thank you for that. Thank you for listening. God bless you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Paula Castano, and then following Paula will be Damaris Bridges. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Lynn. Board Members, Paula Castano, representing Hillsborough Public School Advocates. I taught my first grader to read at age four. I just started teaching my four-year-old to read. I know you know my background, but for people listening at home, I have a Masters of Education and a background in teaching. I also hired my friend, a 20-year veteran, a top reading specialist, to help me elevate their skills. My six-year-old, without any prompting by me, honestly, I'm being honest about that, despises iReady, probably because we use authentic literacy, AKA, for those at home, real books, and occasionally, a nationally-ranked reading program. My daughter tanked iReady. She is an above-level reader and feels deflated. We spend a lot of time doing iReady at home now, just so she feels better about herself. That's not how I think the start of public school should have started. Number one, stop buying programs. Invest in hiring teachers, needed resources, and authentic literacy. For parents listening at home, you are allowed to opt out of any computer program. You are allowed to opt out of any testing, even on a state level. I might become one of those parents. I never thought that I would. Number two, invest in our Title I transformation schools and all the underserved populations. Number three, district-run charters and outside charters with no accountability. Not the answer. We do not want them. Listen to your educators. Use needs assessment surveys to get answers. Do surprise visits on these charters. I recommend at least six times a year. Hold them to the same standards you hold our teachers. Number four, we want a lobbyist sign-in like the B.O.C.C. Why is Ralph Arza, the charter school promoter, always here in our district? I'd like that question answered. Number five, get our ESER funds. Addison, I ask you to please send a formal letter on behalf of our district, band together with other superintendents across the state that are also wanting the other buckets of ESER II and would like the application to be had by ESER III. I'm not exaggerating. I work in this advocacy job now, seven days a week, like I'm working back in the counterterrorism division. I wake up early in the morning. I sometimes stay up to 3:00 AM.
Thank you, Paul. Next, we'll hear from Damaris Bridges, followed by Veronica McDonald. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for, for this morning. I really appreciated the workshop, and I was really excited to see the more robust reporting on lobbyists coming through in the, in the workshop, policy workshop, and I'm hoping that that makes it through because, like, like Paula said earlier, it's something really important, and it, and it goes a long way with transparency. The other thing I want to talk about is the importance of listening to our students. About a year ago, one of our students came up here and talked about having free feminine products available for, for our students, because that can be an issue, right? Especially in the times we're in right now, and it makes them easily available. So, of course, I followed her out from the board meeting and chased her down and found out she was a student at Robinson High School, and I helped to make sure that she knew how to advocate for that, and that program is going to be implemented in Robinson. And now tonight, Julie is going to present to, to plant, to tell us how we can raise funds to make sure those are available, and so we're using those as pilot programs to see about raising funds, developing partnerships, so we can have those in other schools. And all of this just because we were able to listen to a student. At the CAC meeting the other night, students brought up their concerns about how our dress codes are impacting them, especially our female students, and that's really important to note. My son has gone in in tank tops and clothes that I have not wanted him to go into, but he has never gotten dress coded. But many of our girls, as young as fifth grade, are forced to line up and put their hands down by their side in front of their classmates, and they're embarrassed by that. So, that's an issue that we need to look at with our students, the ones who are being directly impacted by this policy, especially our younger students. And lastly, I want to talk to you about the importance of involving the community and parents and students in the process of making your schools better, and specifically, community schools, but I'm going to use an example that wasn't a community school to begin with. We just approached it that way. So, when I got to Grady, and you're going to think I'm crazy, everyone was opting out of it. Our local students didn't go to it. They were sending their kids to private schools. They were, they were choicing into other schools. And we got together, a group of parents with the principal and administration and teachers, and said, "How can we make this school better?" And so, we worked on, "How do we make this feel like a family? How do we make this feel like parents and teachers are being valued?" And now it is one of the most competitive schools in our district. It's a school that people fight to get into, all because we listened to and valued the teachers and the parents and the students that were there, and we worked to create a family atmosphere and provide for the needs of those students. So, I really want to encourage you to look at, and that's not the community school model. We just happen to do some of those pieces, but to really look at that and to use that as a model for other schools, so we can improve them. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bridges. Following Ms. Bridges will be Veronica McDonald, then Adilia Phillips, and then Jessica Dubois. And good afternoon.
Hello, my name is Veronica McDonald. I just want to tell you that I was banking this week for my school's PTA, and as I was leaving the bank, I looked to the right, and there is a McDonald's advertising a starting pay of $14.50 per hour, within a mile of my elementary school, that is, short on custodians, short on substitutes, short on paraprofessionals. So, why is our custodians, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, why is their pay not competitive to the market? We're losing, we are at an all-time high when, with the vacancies that we have. Our HCPS support staff deserve a raise and not a one-time bonus, which does nothing for their long-term benefit. We have, why is it also that we can't get substitute teachers in our classrooms? We have teachers with teaching degree and necessary certifications that have newly retired from our district and are willing to substitute, but they're saying that they cannot because there is a necessary one-year gap that they have to have before going back into the classroom. If we're that hurting for teachers, maybe we need to look at a policy change for our teachers to make the necessary changes to get them back in the classrooms as substitutes. Additionally, last week, $43.8 million of ESER's funds for academic assistance was released by the FLDOE to Hillsborough, 5.7 of which was for charter schools. We also just received notification of the $10 million allocations for technology assistance. So, I want to say thank you to all Hillsborough PTA members, Hillsborough Public School Advocates, and any community members that called the Commissioner's Office and the Governor's Office to advocate for these funds. I urge the school board and our superintendent to do the same, because there is still over $60 million outstanding of ESER II due to Hillsborough County and all of ESER III that we continue to advocate for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Adilia Phillips, then Jessica Dubois, and then Pat Hall. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon and greetings, Board Members. I am Adilia Phillips, Dr. Adilia Phillips, immediate past president of the League of Women Voters of Hillsborough County. And as you know, the League and its partners, namely the Public School Advocates Group, are longtime supporters of education in this county, particularly quality education. In that vein, I would like to comment on a specific, critical, and significant driver of educational inequity, the lack of adequate funding. The current PPE for Hillsborough County is half that of the national average, and therefore insufficient to fund the requisite resources for quality education for all students. We hope that as the League and its partner organizations will advocate for the release and equitable expenditure of EESERS funds. An efficient public school system must require that all students have a reasonable and impartial access to appropriate educational opportunities, and that requires funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Jessica Dubois, then Pat Hall, and then Josephine Amato. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Jessica Dubois, representing Hillsborough Public School Advocates. One of the core tenets of our group is to ensure that every dollar is spent in a thoughtful way towards bettering the educational experience for all children. While education could be the great equalizer, sadly, it has been used to highlight inequities in our district and state. COVID exacerbated these inequities and has created a deeper divide between these students in our district, state, and country, whose needs are being met, and those who keep missing the cutoff. Some students are in quarantine and missing the only wholesome meal that they are promised daily. Some are at home, falling behind because their families don't have access to devices or internet. And sadly, some don't even have access to the health care they need to remain healthy. Can we come together and think of ways and get creative for these students? Their, their essential needs aren't being met, and their educational needs aren't being met. How can we think that they're going to be able to learn if they're hungry and they can't? they're hungry and that can't even focus on their studies? Yet, somehow, we live in the only state in the country who didn't apply for federally provided funding for nutritional programs. I heard this may have changed today. And we're only a handful of states that have yet to apply for federally approved ESER 3 funds. I challenge everyone watching and those of you here in front of me, please keep the pressure on for all students and those whose parents will never hear this message because they are starting their second or third shift of the day just to make ends meet. Let's keep fighting as if these are your kids and for those families that'll never have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Pat Hall, then Josephine Amato, and then Diane Williamson. And good afternoon.
Hi. I'm Pat Hall, and I'm here today to talk mostly about money. After listening to Kathy Castor's town hall last night, I am troubled. Has Florida become a monarchy with King Ronald and his consort, Richard the Nasty, in charge? Florida is the only state of 51 not applying for the $2.3 billion in federal funds for feeding impoverished children. As was just alluded to, maybe that changed today, but it's September 21st. We have 62% of the school population on free and reduced lunch. In addition, we left $820 million under the table for federal food assistance. Didn't Hillsborough Public Schools spend millions in 2020 feeding children and families after schools closed in March of 2020? No money or personnel from charter schools to help, by the way. Hillsborough County is owed $402 million from ESER 3, due in our bank account by May 24th, when Richard the Nasty threatened to shut us down and take money the first time. We are owed $626 million in ESER funds in total. $574 million is due in Hillsborough County for learning losses during the time out of school. Why is this happening by our Republican-controlled, gerrymandered legislature? An answer to a question from Representative Valdez, Representative Randy Fine answered, "Because we can withhold funds. It is inhumane, unconscionable, and against federal law. Who are these two evil dishonest politicians telling the school board that they are breaking the law, overmasking children? Wake up, moms, dads, families, and business owners of all kinds. We need a well-educated workforce, essential to our economy. Call, email, text legislators, annoy, pester them until you see positive results for our public schools. Vote them out in August and November of 2022. Matter Academy should not be approved." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Josephine Amato, and then Diane Williamson, followed by Allison Fernandez. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm here today to speak to you about ESER 2 and ESER 3. So, ESER 2 and ESER 3 are funded under the authorization of the Every Student Succeed Act Title I. Title I's purpose, and I will read directly from the statute, "The purpose of this title is to provide all children significant opportunity to receive a fair and equitable, high-quality education and to close educational achievement gaps. The purpose of ESER is to measure and address learning loss among students disproportionately affected by the coronavirus and schools' closures, including low-income children, children with disabilities, English-language learners, racial and ethnic minorities, homeless students, military-connected students, and our youth in foster care." How our allocation flow chart should go is my suggestion should always begin and end with our children's benchmarks. Where are children at right now? Have they had education loss? Have they suffered from lack of progression? Have they suffered from regression? We start with the student. We make our goals based on our students' needs to bring them up to state educational benchmarks. We develop those goals, and then we develop the objectives of those goals to have an action plan. And after we have an action plan, how we're going to get our students to where they need to be and take care of our children, because that is what the funding is for, then we fund that allocation. We do not start with the needs that are our basic needs that happen every day in our district. We pay teachers every day in our district. We pay our bus drivers. We pay everyone else. And I understand we need an increase in our basic student allowance. I understand that, but ESER is not for that. And by the way, ESER 2 and ESER 3 are supposed to address education for our students this year for 2021, 2022, and 2022 and 2023. So, our state Department of Education is withholding because they're waiting for the plans. And we have to report how we spent that funding and how it reached our students. And if we do not allocate that funding properly, the feds will ask for it back. So, yes, we have a fiscal situation in Hillsborough County. We have a transportation crisis in our county. We have a meeting the needs of our salaries in our county. I understand that, but this funding is not for that because this funding ends next year. And if we continue our behavior as we've done in the past, we will have the same student outcomes, and we will still be in the same fiscal situation. And as leaders in our district, I am asking you to begin and end all fiscal decisions with our students and what they need. And if we don't start changing how we do things, we are failing our children. They are relying on us to be responsible leaders that are driven, inventive, and to lead the way and make that path for them. We obviously have to learn from our past mistakes. We can and should do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Diana Williamson, and followed by Allison Fernandez, and last, Michelle Fava.
Good afternoon, school.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Diana Williamson. I live in District 5. I have come here because District 5, I feel, is neglected. It's been neglected since, I don't know when, since ever, forever. My problem is that District 5 students are segregated into all these different schools. There's no schools in the inner city, especially middle schools. We're building a middle school, your building proposed, it's already on the budget, $46 million, so I guess you're going to go ahead with that. A block away from, not a block, but a mile, within a mile of Madison Middle School. It's a PK through 8 magnet school. They did a public meeting. They didn't tell the people in the public meeting or in the video that the students from Madison and Monroe, which are under-capacity schools historically, they're from Ybor City. They're from Tampa. They're from downtown. They also, nobody, nobody talked about the school that is on, the school that was proposed years and years ago and promised for decades they were going to make a Meacham Middle School downtown. There's property that you own for that. It was taken off of the five-year plan. I don't understand. Why are you sending kids to Brandon? You're sending kids to Sonasasa. You're sending kids to South Tampa. You're sending them to West Tampa. You're using the transportation costs. You cut courtesy busing. Kids are crossing over Busch Boulevard, over all, in Lithia, through no sidewalks, and so many dangerous situations. There's been several students that have been hit by cars over the last several years. You cut spending on that, but you didn't look at sending all these kids out of their neighborhoods? Are you splitting them up because you're scared that they might not get along? Well, why don't you build a community schools that we're, we're talking about community schools, only if it's an elementary school. There's no feeder schools into middle. It's not fair to District 5. It's completely neglected. Nobody talks about it. Funds are allocated to South Tampa, to a school, it's a mile away. It doesn't make any sense. And I really, no, you can't do anything specifically about it, but you can put pressure, you can ask questions to the planning committee. You are the ones that approve everything. Please just don't keep approving. Ask questions. Have community meetings. There's no more community. We haven't had them in forever. Can we have some community meetings addressing the boundaries in all of Hillsborough County? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Allison Fernandez, followed by Michelle Fava. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Allison Fernandez. I have a couple of areas to address. One is, again, 89% to 90% of your general fund budget is people. We know you need people at schools. You need teachers, and you need bus drivers, and the people that interact directly with the students, which means you are going to have to face some very difficult decisions to bridge your $61 million shortfall. And as other people have said up here, it cannot be done with ESER funds. We've been down this road before, using temporary funding for ordinary expenses. It does not work. So, you are going to have to make some very difficult decisions, and that will be the only way this district stays solvent. I believe very strongly that you have got to rebalance where you're spending because we've got to be looking at what impacts the student first and foremost. Have you done an analysis of where you're busing children now? Maybe if you redid boundaries and you had children going closer to their schools and their community, you could improve the outcome at that school for that student and spend less of the money on busing, more directly on the student. We talked this morning about equity, and I would like to say, you cannot guarantee equity of outcome. I have four children, same two parents, same house their entire lives. Actually, all of them went to the exact same schools, from preschool to high school. There is not a single outcome that is identical for any four of them. You can guarantee equity of access, and if you do not rebalance your budget, you will not be able to do that. Some things you could do. One, take community schools, whether it's a magnet school or not. Make it a technology center. If it's a magnet school and none of the children in the, have an attendance area, but they live near it, make it a technology school. So, after school hours, it doesn't have to be done by teachers. It could be someone else, and that could be a technology hub. You could do all kinds of things. The schools where the students are struggling the most, they would probably benefit from block scheduling, which I get, it is more expensive. However, what's the money for if it's not to teach students? A lot of the behavior issues come from being behind in the classroom. That's where we have got to make up and bridge that gap, and that is where the equity of access comes in. So, this is all going to come out of budget decisions. I mean, I have three pages of suggestions that I've thought a lot about, but you are going to be asked to do things that some people aren't going to like. And that's the way it is because the public moves. What, a popular neighborhood one time is now full of old people, and they don't go to school, and now they're down in South County, and you have to adapt to that. So, that's all we're asking.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Michelle Fava. And if I've mispronounced your name, Michelle, please let me know, and I apologize ahead of time. Good afternoon.
Fava, Michelle Fava. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, I already appealed to you once when you illegally passed the first mask mandate. Now, I'm here to present you a firsthand application of the unscientific quarantine policy. It has been said, when you put people away who are sick, that is quarantine, but when you lock up people who are well, that's tyranny. So, it's offensive enough to me that you are forcing children to undergo the psychological torture of wearing a mask for seven hours a day. Meanwhile, those kids who still have the capability of thinking for themselves are looking around wondering, "Why do I have to wear a mask when no one out in the real world is wearing a mask?" So, when I was notified on Saturday that my first grader was exposed to COVID, and therefore, he would be excluded from school for seven days, I questioned, "How was he exposed when all the sheeple except for him are wearing masks?" I was told that a student at the lunch table next to his lunch table, not at his lunch table, but the lunch table next to his lunch table, tested positive. So, I questioned, "What about the latest three-foot social distance recommendation?" Well, this is how I see it. When the prisoners are allowed to take off their masks to eat, the newest social distance protocol is back to the arbitrary six feet. So, my six-year-old, there's no way that his expectorant can get to the table next to him. There's no way that two six-year-olds are sharing expectorant two tables away. But yet, he has to quarantine for seven days. He's excluded from school for seven days as a first grader. Why? I just don't understand it. So, how I see this, as you sit here wearing no clothes in your ivory tower like Big Brother, sipping champagne, celebrating your violation of the Parents' Bill of Rights, I'm still the parent, think about this practical, real-life application of your arbitrary quarantine policies. Guess how many children are in the hospital this week with COVID, according to Hillsborough County? Zero. Zero. Yet, my child is excluded from school to protect him from this deadly exposure. It's not a deadly exposure. It's not fair that he has to stay home for seven days. I'm fortunate that I can stay home with him. Parents, some parents don't have that, you know, they can't do that. So, I'm stuck staying home for seven days because he can't go to school because of this. I think you guys need to think about it really seriously. In my opinion, you should be ashamed of yourselves that you're excluding my seven, my six-year-old from school because of this, the table next to him, someone testing positive. I said it before, and I'm going to say it again, I don't need you to protect my son from COVID, okay? Do your job of providing education and let me do mine, because I think this tyranny has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our public comments, and we're going to now get into recognitions and proclamations. We have two tonight. A special proclamation about our National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is September 15th through October 15th. Member Perez will be issuing, or presenting, sorry, the proclamation in English and in Spanish. Member Perez?
Thank you. El distrito tiene el honor de reconocer el mes nacional de la herencia hispana del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre. El propósito del mes de la herencia hispana es compartir la historia y de herencia y las contribuciones de los hispanos y latinos esta unicenses del país y del pasado y presente mientras honra su cultura. El día del 15 de septiembre es significativo porque es el aniversario de la independencia para los países latinoamericanos: Costa Rica y El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, y Nicaragua. Además, México y Chile celebran sus días de independencia del 16 de septiembre al septiembre 18, respectivamente. Hay más de 80,000 estudiantes en nuestro distrito que se identifican como hispanos o latinos, lo que lo convierte en el grupo demográfico más grande de nuestro distrito. Nuestro distrito ha creado un mes de la herencia hispana, un comité para colaborar los reunidos a todos para dar forma o como nuestro distrito celebra y reconoce las notables contribuciones de nuestra herencia hispana latina. Hay numerosas maneras de celebrarlas y pueden encontrar un enlace de ellas en nuestro sitio web, hillsboroughschools.org. Now, for English, for those who didn't understand a word I said. The district is honored to recognize National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th. The purpose of Hispanic Heritage Month is to share history, heritage, and contributions of Hispanic and Latinx Americans of the past and present while honoring their culture. The day of September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independent days on September 16th and September 18th. There are more than 80,000 students in our district who identify as Hispanic or Latino, making it the largest demographic in our district. Our district has created a Hispanic Heritage Month Committee to collaborate and bring all of us together to shape how our district celebrates and recognizes the remarkable contributions of our Hispanic-Latinx heritage. There are numerous ways to celebrate, and you could find a link to them in our website, hillsboroughschools.org. hillsboroschools.org.
Thank you, Member Perez. All right. Now, I have a motion by Member Perez, and I have a second by Member Snively, and discussion, if I can invite discussion. I just wanted to also continue the recognition, if we can do so, board members. I want to thank also Member Perez, but I have to say, we have a Hispanic committee here that's here tonight, who has been meeting almost, I think we've been almost a year and a half, and they have created an outreach that is not, I mean, it is huge, through South County, Southeast County, Town and Country Area, and Inplant City, and on and on. So at this time, I just want to recognize them. And first, I want to say a very big thank you to Monica Vera Torado, our Director of Diversity. A big heartwarming appreciation to our superintendent for allowing this committee the strength and the fortitude and the position and the, I would say, the courage just to fight the battles that we've never fought before and being so successful. And board members, if you'll allow me to allow them to stand and be recognized, I'd appreciate that. Alma, they've given me the phonetics here. Alma Agiri.
Agiri.
Oh, thanks. Lauren Burgard, Burgard, now I'm going to get in trouble on everyone. Thanks, Lauren. Mercedes Brown. And Member Combs, by the way, you don't have to stand, Member Combs, but we want to thank you as well for your joining in. Elena Garcia. I can see you, Elena. Everline Garcia. Andrea, oh, here we go, Andrea Jostenski. Jostenski, hey, Andrea. Araceli Martinez Pina. Thanks. Pina. Carol Mayo. Hey, Carol. Harold Medina. Melissa Margato. See, I'm getting pretty good. Julia Saramento. Monica Vera Torado. And hold Ford here. We have a few committee members that were unable to attend. Real Garcia, Giselle Lenegar, Leslie Lopez, and Ruth Vigas. So we want to thank you for all of your hard work, your intelligence, and that's just the beginning. We have a lot to look forward to, and we will continue our committee meetings. And board members, let's give them a big hand for your commitment. And thanks for spending time with us tonight. Thank you so much. Okay, so they're adjourning, and now we want to go ahead and recognize one partner that we all know and appreciate, that's been around our school district for many, many years. And I'll have them stand, or better yet, come on up, because I think they're going to, oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Member Snively. We're going to have a vote, but I think we have a few more speakers that want to discuss. Any discussion? Go ahead, Member Perez.
I wanted to thank the committee also, because they've highlighted so much of the Latino and Hispanic community, and brought so much more to the table than we've had in the last few years, especially the new website for the Hispanic community, you know, the Facebook page, everything, you know, making them more a part of this district than they had before. So I want to thank you for doing that, and, you know, just embracing the Latino community like you have in the last few years. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Perez. Member Combs?
I also wanted to make a comment, and thank you Chair Gray for inviting me to be part of the Hispanic Forum. So I've been very active since I've been there, and every, we meet monthly, and every month, you know, it's not just about talking about things, there's always action, we're always seeing things, the needs of our community, and then we're seeing actions that are occurring. So I really feel confident that, you know, that is the largest population that we have in this district. It's almost thirty-nine percent of our students are from Hispanic descent, and to know that their voices are being heard, and to see that we're making plans and then creating actions with all these individuals in the district. We still have a lot of work to do, but I am seeing, I'm seeing a positive change, and I want to thank the Cabinet and the Superintendent and everybody who's been leading this, Chair Gray, to really thank all those people out there in the Cabinet who are making a difference every day for students, for children, for the migrant population, for dual language. There's so many things that we're doing, and I really feel optimistic that we're going to continue to make those changes in the near future.
Thank you, Member Combs. Any other discussion? At this time, please vote when your lights are on, and this is revolving around the Hispanic Thank you, board members. It's unanimous. And now, the drum roll continues. We'll go right to the recognition of Casper's Company McDonald's Restaurants. I just have a few things to say, and here we go. I think if we can get Bob Conigliano and Dustin Partello up, 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 up. We would like to recognize you both and your company, one that has given generously and joyously, joyously to our schools each year. Well, at any rate, your partnership has just been unparalleled and supports the welfare of so many of our children. Casper's Company goes above and beyond for our schools in every way. They are the very definition of a valued community partner for our schools, students, and staff. Here is just a sampling of some of the things that they do to support our district. Well, it's not numbered, but here it goes. Casper's creates custom coupons to honor our students, such as what, well, actually, our bus drivers just recently. In 2020, they printed more than five hundred and forty-nine thousand coupons totaling three quarters of a million dollars in food, three quarters of a million dollars. Casper's has created its Casper's Care Good Character Program, which began in 2019. Each year, the award is given to three elementary students and three middle school students. Each student wins a bike or a Fitbit tracker, and I know most of the board members have been part of that. Casper's has donated countless breakfasts to teachers at school sites and all pro dads and moms gatherings. Casper's is the founding sponsor of our Excellence in Education awards. Casper's is also a major supporter for transformation schools, and last year, Casper's gave more than fifty thousand dollars in money and incentives to help raise attendance at those transformational schools. One of the greatest things about Casper's Company is the way they donate. You can tell the wonderful people at Casper's give with a joyous heart. They love, absolutely, I am so convinced, I think we all are, you absolutely love being at our schools and talking with the staff and students. They love being part of our school community, and we cannot be more grateful to have them as a partner in education. At this time, I would like to present to you Dustin Partello with the Casper's Company and Bob Conigliano. You're already coming up, so you may now speak.
Speak when spoken to, that's what I say. First of all, I want to say, you know, thank you all very much for allowing us to stand up here. As you know, for sixty-three years plus, Casper's Company has been giving to Hillsborough Schools, and I know we've had each of the board members a part of the Good Character Award. So we want to take this time, because I know that time is of the essence. We are introducing a new program tonight. We have the five hundred and forty-nine thousand-plus coupons we gave to you all last year. Well, we are proud to say that we've been working with the IT department, and we have created a digital coupon platform site where an educator at each school site, two hundred plus, will be able to go onto our platform and either text or email the parent of their student the coupon. So we are not totally eliminating the printed coupon. Those will be used for school sites where your transformation school sites. Oak Park Elementary stands out where most of those students are transient, their parents may be in rehab, they may live in hotels. So we will definitely be using a paper coupon, but we will be eliminating the cost, and that money can now be allocated towards more great programs. So we are just honored to let you all, kind of let us shine up here and tell what we do, and we do it with a servant's heart. And, you know, Bob and I also are a part of CEOs in schools, and we've been doing that now. Bob has been doing it for two or three years, and this is going on my second year, and another wonderful way for us to celebrate our love and appreciation for the district. Bob?
I know our time is limited. Madam Chair and honorable board members, it is an honor for us to be up here. We've been doing this a very, very long time, and to keep it short and sweet, and Dustin and I have been saying this for a long time, there's so much more to what we do than just burgers and fries. Everything that we do on that list, and I compiled a list just as long of what's not on the list that you have there of what we do, and the net result of everything that we do is generating happiness for all the stakeholders that are involved in and around the school district, the teachers, the students, the parents, and all the educators that support the system. Thank you for the honor of being able to help, to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you all don't mind, both of you, you have a few board comments, I believe. Board Member Combs?
I just want to thank you. I remember twenty-seven years ago, I was at Franklin Middle School, teaching in a small portable, and Bob, you came there and you spoke to my class, and you spoke about how when you were hired, you cleaned the bathroom like no one did, the way you did the cashiering, how you started from the very bottom with McDonald's and worked all the way up. And I was really inspired, and I remember, you know, when I first met you when I came on the board, I said, I remember there was a guy who came in and talked to my dropout prevention class, and it had such an impact on me, and that was twenty-seven years ago, and you said to me, that was me, and I said, that's right. I couldn't believe it. So I think it's one thing, you know, to say that you're doing things, but it's a whole nother thing is when you live your life doing that. And I just want to thank both of you for really your commitment for so many years. I mean, twenty-seven years ago, you were at Franklin Middle School, and here you are, standing here today, continuing to give to our district, and I want to thank you and the Casper's Company for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Combs. Well said. Member Perez?
Thank you. And, you know, the fact that it's just not the, you know, the coupons that you give our teachers and, you know, spirit nights, twenty percent of those sales come to our schools. To the tune of, in 2020, forty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars came to these schools. So you not just fill the bellies, but you fill the brick and mortars of these schools. And also, you know, our transformation schools that are so needed, you know, fifty thousand dollars in supporting and, you know, the raising of attendance in our schools, that's so significant, you know. It's just, you know, the back-to-school donations for educators for their classrooms, and then, you know, the breakfasts that you give our new teachers, you know. You know, I see you there, you know, in the new teacher orientations, and, you know, but also, you know, what you do for us on a personal note, you rode with me on a school bus, you know, half the day to keep a promise that I made to some students when we didn't realize that a pandemic was going to hit this nation. And I made a promise to some students to celebrate their graduation, and we couldn't do that, so we went from house to house to celebrate those students, and you were right along, on that ride along with me, and I thank you. I thank you for all you do on a daily basis for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Perez. Member Hahn?
Well, I mean, I obviously echo everything my colleagues have said. You do so much for our schools, and it's just been a real pleasure since I've been on the board, especially the last two years, to get to know both of you a little bit better and have some things in common. My fellow New Yorker goes all the way back to North Bablin High School and...
What are you talking about over there?
I know. And, you know, Dustin, you're always out at the literacy fairs, and you created that wonderful bookmark with the coupon. I just can't thank you all enough for how you support our district. McDonald's is a big part of our family. You know, we love to get McDonald's breakfast. We miss it, we miss that it's not all day long anymore, but we understand, after our conversation.
You can always tell someone who is an avid user, because that is a true statement. It is no longer all day.
I know. But just thank you so much. We couldn't do some of the things that we're able to provide for our students without your support, Casper's family and McDonald's family. We thank all of you for everything you do each and every day.
Thank you, Member Hahn. Member Washington?
You know, words cannot express what all you have done in Tampa. Dustin, you're young, you just started, but I thank you for doing a great job, because you're always out here helping students, and that's what it's about, helping students. Bob, you've probably been working for sixty-three years, haven't you? It seems like it, Bob.
It's only forty-seven, but that's, but I'm not counting.
But, Bob, you have always, and you know, we go back a long ways, when I was the head basketball coach at King High School, that's right, you used to come out, because you used to give us signs and so forth, to put up in the gym to help kids. You have always been dedicated to the students of Hillsborough County, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, man. You know, it takes a, it takes a long road, driving down, driving down a long road to understand the fortitude and the gratitude of driving down that road, and you've been doing it for a long time, Bob, and I really appreciate you, man, and anything we can do, you know, to help, hey, we'll be more than happy to. So thank you all for all that you do for Hillsborough County Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Snively?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say I really like your new haircut, Bob. It takes ten years off of you, it really does. Because you have been working, what, sixty years, did he say? I'm just kidding. No, it's been such a pleasure getting to know you gentlemen over the last several years, and cannot say thank you and show you enough appreciation for the involvement that you've had. You all are familiar faces. You might be some of the most familiar faces that we have in the school district when it comes to showing your face at schools, showing your support, being in the classroom, giving not just your, filling the bellies and the classrooms, but filling your heart as well. So thank you very much, and as an avid McDonald's fan, I will say, big McValley fish, quarter pounder french fry, Icy Coke shakes, sundaes, and apple pies. We thank you.
All right, she deserves it.
Meeting is adjourned.
Good going, Member Snively. Hard to follow that one. Superintendent Davis, good luck.
Yes, ma'am, and through the chair, you know, Bob, I thought you were talking about my haircut, but, you know, you got a lot...
Trying to be like you.
Sure, you look great. You and, this is probably one of the most remarkable partnerships that I've been engaged in education. It's far more than just a meal, a drink, a, you know, ice cream cone, a cookie, whatever it may be. For each of you, when you walk to school, your mentality is just as vibrant as every other educator in every one of the classrooms. So thank you for your dedication, thank you for commitment, and thank you for making education so important in this community. So look forward to continuing great work, and, you know, we appreciate your dedication.
Much more to come. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, and have a very good evening, and we'll probably see you tomorrow, somewhere. Okay, board members, we're going to go ahead and get to the consent agenda. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I have, whoops, we'll have to clear the screen. Okay. I have a motion by Member Combs and a second by Member Perez. Please vote when your lights are on. Votes are unanimous, and right now, the consent agenda has been approved, and we're right now at the superintendent's comments. Ms., excuse me, Superintendent Davis, you're on. Ms., excuse me, Superintendent Davis, you're on.
Thanks very much. Tonight, I want to provide a few updates for the community and to the board and to our organization. Want to be able to give an overview of ESER funds and where we are as a, you know, Hillsborough County, review some of the sales tax impact that we've currently, or proven this evening on the consent agenda. At the same token, talk about any of these, some updated suspended agenda items related to transformation literacy COVID. And then provide two district updates to be able to educate our community where we are. First and foremost, I guess one of the, you know, one of the comments was made about advocacy. And please know that, you know, I have had many, many conversations with both chancellors in Department of Education alongside with Susan Pridgen, who is the CFO for the Department of Education, to be able to talk about timing for ESER funds. You know, those conversations have been continued. And just as today, me and Ms. Gray have sent a formal letter to Department of Education, really getting and asking for a concrete date. Why, two weeks ago, I was providing a date from the CFO from the Department of Education of mid-October. To date, we still haven't seen any type of assurances or any award agreement to our school district. Therefore, after two weeks passed, being able to send a formal letter, hopefully we'll get a response to be able to give some concrete information related to where we are with the American Rescue Plan. However, this slide just really tells us where we are. We've, ESER 1, we've received all of the $54.7 million that we have been allocated based on all of the criteria and credentials. Today, as you look at ESER 2, we've, you know, while the entire package is $219 million to Hillsborough County, we've received around $155 million to date. It's over, that's around 71% of the dollars that we have received. And we are still looking at the balance of the lump sum and also the non-enrollment assistance to be able to come to our school district, to be able to use and leverage within our schools every single day. As relates to the lump sum, that lump sum, there's a number of elements that we will use to be able to leverage and be able to assist with moving the needle within our schools. And also to make certain that we slide over eligible expenses. And then we look forward to the American Rescue Plan. That brings close to $500 million to our school district, which really is going to allow us to put systems in place to address the achievement gap and other elements with COVID as this plan is expected. In addition, community sales tax this evening, we approved the acceptance of a project of Belme Elementary School. This is where we instilled a number of interior walls modifications. As you know, the school didn't have a lot of interior walls, and classrooms were open in that building. Also did a lot of external painting and also for HVAC, which is around $3.2 million. The overall, you know, invested to date is $269 million for the referendum results. And this is, you know, a really, this funding has really allowed us to address some of the many, many deferred maintenances within our school district related to HVAC, related to roofing, related to plumbing, related to safety, security, technology upgrades, which is a, you know, definitely needed within our school district. And the celebration is set, 25% of this funding has been spent with small businesses. In the same token, with minority businesses within our community. And that's a celebration for our concentration. Also back to the Citizens Oversight Committee, who continues to be ran by our Chair, Mrs. Betty Kasher, who continues to make certain we make sound decisions based on the overarching needs of our school district every single day. So thank you, and we'll continue to make sure we acknowledge our community for this continued commitment. As relates to the suspended agenda, one of the things we want to continue to keep in front is our transformation schools. These are our 45 schools that are under the umbrella of Shay McCray and her staff. And just to give you an update of where we are with the equity refresh, right now, the operations team has worked to begin a equity, a multi-phase equity refresh within our school district to make around $22 million investment to reimagine and to upgrade our media centers within these schools. This is a seven-year concentration. We will be doing this in a unique perspective for every one of the 44 schools. And there's 44 schools because one is already, is a brand-new school with Tampa Heights being elementary. They've already been reimagined. So we're going to be able to engage the community with information to be able to determine how they want this media centers to look. So it has a true reflection of their school and their community. We have a number of schools that are going to be on the first rollout. And we look forward to creating this, a new refreshed mentality so the students can overly have a positive learning experience and really fall in love with literacy. Also with the, in the transformation schools, Western Governors University has announced that 10 teachers are a winner of Fund My Classrooms. This is a small grant, up to $500. There's a number of schools that have been identified in teachers. And this is for our teachers to be able to have special projects within our classrooms to really focus on enhancing the climate and culture and building that positive culture every single day linked to learning. And then Casper, they just left. As you know, they continue to be such an awesome partner within our school district. But they continue to make available, you know, to bring out $50,000 of direct and indirect incentive supports and gift cards to our teachers, dinner coupons to our parents and guardians, and also to be able to support our end-of-the-year celebrations in the Transformational Network. So hats off to them for understanding the need for concentration for not only students doing the right thing academically, but also from a behavior standpoint, academic standpoint. And we appreciate them for their dedication. And the last one is instructional review process. We know that we had a number of our schools that moved from F to Cs and from Ds to Bs. And for us to be really systemic, the Transformation Network is implementing instructional reviews just to make certain that we have greater concentration on the educational outcomes, using data to prescribe the work, and really going to be thoughtful about what supports we are offering to our PLCs, our Lunch and Learns every single day. And just getting, you know, a better understanding of what teachers need so we can really strategically align our support from the district office, not only through the Transformational Network, but also through Terry Connor's shop to figure out how we can continue to address the overarching needs of our students, to make certain that we can continue to move the needle in every way within our school district. In addition to the suspended agenda is literacy update. And we know that this continues to be the foundation of our work. You will see from elementary, this literacy update will be linked to our elementary focus. As right now, we are in the process of updating our curriculum guides from the grades three to five and really focus on knowledge building related to, you know, through reading quality texts and text sets and connecting those to the best standards and also the continued FSA standards. And we're really making certain those connections are really not only in isolation with literacy, with reading, but really focused on writing as well, with a focus on topic, audience, and purpose, where our students can really start to study texts from both the reader's perspective and writers and develop some thoughtful content and be able to craft work. And then being able to look at text-dependent questions, performance tasks, and allowing our children to really have discourse where they can orally or written, really interact with collaborative structures to really defend and talk about their lessons learned and concepts and really having real-world connections. In addition to that, we're looking at redefining our frameworks. This really gives a clarity about how the workflow of that, the rhythm of the learner, the rhythm of the teacher interacts every single day. And then having that process to be able to look at guiding practices through data analytics and really how to leverage every one of the resources within our classrooms. And then also moving once again from remediation to acceleration. And as we update those frameworks, being able to make certain that we have and push the cognitive complexities of texts and really activating the students' experiences and backgrounds so they can have and better understand their skill level so they can be successful. And then really focusing on the 10 key focus standards and how we can leverage those every six weeks through short-term prerequisite and progress monitoring assessments. And then being able to look at Canvas and put learning ladders and texts, you know, put texts that we can flag for small groups so teachers don't have to go and continue to grasp and look and search for high-quality texts all the time. That we can just put it in a one-stop shop where they can identify, locate it, and be able to leverage it based on the students' needs every day. And then what do we have for forecastability with literacy is just, you know, continue to have common planning tools that administrators and coaches can share with teachers. Being able to make certain that professional development is high-quality and it's all about acceleration every single day. And it's really focused explicitly on the ELL block, ELA block, with scaffolds and support for students. And then being able to make certain that we get feedback from our teachers of where we are with our learning guides. What can we do to make sure that we are aligning all of our resources? What are we doing to make certain that the core tier one is being exposed in an efficient manner? And how can we eliminate some of all the time that teachers are spending trying to differentiate and just give really explicit models to help them be able to move that? And right now, we're in the process of finalizing the quarter two. So anything that we can get feedback from our teachers to send to academic services, please do that so that we can really make certain that we are doing, you know, an effective job for all of our educators. And then you'll see a better connection between not only, you know, being exposed to literacy and teaching literacy, but how we connect writing to that process. We will get stronger in that. There's been a need, a vocal need from our teachers. And that will be a reality as we transition through the second quarter and semester. Also with our expanded agendas, COVID, you know, this is just some analytics related to the overall impact within our school district. And we use the 18th because the 18th was the day that we've implemented masks. We do know, we talked about last board meeting, there's so many other indicators related to this data about making certain that we are using and following the protocols related to quarantining, making certain that we continue to expose and highlight vaccination opportunities within our community. And as we see from the 18th to the 20th, there continues to be a downward slide of the number of individuals that are impacted, whether it be on COVID or whether it be related to quarantine within our school district. At the high point, we had 13,000 individuals that were impacted. And today, we, you know, we are down to 2,600 students. So, you know, and teachers being impacted, potentially being out. And that's the same for our cases. Whereas the 23rd, that same relevant data connected, where 601 positive cases were students, now we're down to 105. And we start to see that downward slide. And we appreciate all of our teachers, our leaders, our support staff, and our district employees making it our priority to focus on some of the right elements that allow us to be successful. And then vaccination clinics, you know, hats off to our team for continuing to make certain that we expose vaccination opportunities for our employees. Our team continues to work with vendors and Department of Health to make certain this is a reality. We'll continue to make certain that we have dose one and two of eligibility. We have one coming up this weekend with a number of schools being accessibility. And then you'll see the second dose will be available as well for all of our employees and our students. So thank you to our team. Our team is working very hard. And then overall district updates, human resources, you know, biggest thing is annual enrollment for, you know, health insurance has started and launched today. So there's, you know, this week and the next, you know, nine, 10 days, please make certain that all of our employees are taken advantage who wish to either enroll or make changes. Those changes will be in effect by January the 1st. So please make certain we log in and review all of your plans, look at the designs, and make any adjustments that you need to be made. You know, for faster service, you can go online to be able to access all of the benefits through benefitsfitsnow.com. We encourage that to be able to implement. And also, we will have an annual health fair, which will be on Saturday the 25th from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 at Jefferson High School for any individual that may want to come and have a better understanding of how the insurance platform can help you and your family become and continue to be healthy in that process. And then last thing is national merit scholars. You know, this is where our juniors that have been identified, you know, through the ACT and SAT for their high performance, being in the 1% throughout the nation. You know, 50% of the Tampa Bay region's semifinalists are from Hillsborough County. As you see, you have Hillsborough County, Pinellas, Pasco, Hernando, they're inclusive in this process. But yeah, we have, you know, hats off to our students and, you know, who continue to demonstrate, you know, the highest quality of academic success, and we thank them every single day. One thing I want to do is, the last thing is to address some of the speakers this evening to make certain that we understand, it talks about opting out for state assessments. That is not an option. Students have to sit for that assessment. Parents decide whether or not their child are at school or not. They got to make sure that, you know, that it's a written note. But related to the assessments, there's no opt-out by the state. They've been very clear on that. And I do agree that with some of our dress codes, it has to be consistent for both males and females. And we know it's very hard with a, you know, a father of two young ladies, very hard for clothing nowadays. You know, very, I won't get any more than that, but it's difficult to find the right clothes to align with our dress code. So, you know, we'll continue to make certain that we have high expectations and consistency in that process. And then there is a reality related to being able to fill subpositions. And because those individuals through FRS that retire, they have to sit out one calendar year before they can come back. And that is a frustration. But I think that's part of our legislative platforms to be able to push, to remove. Because we want, you know, whether it's our educators, especially during COVID, if they can come back and teach full-time or be subs, we want them to be an active part of that solution. And then I do like the aspect of continuing to leverage our ESER dashboard to be able to, bless you, ESER dashboard to link priorities and the overall impact, how the dollars are being used to see the return on investment every single day. And then there was questions about boundaries. We did go out for an RFP related to boundary services. And in that process, we will be engaged in the community for feedback because we know it's a really comprehensive, difficult, you know, impact over decisions. So that will be forthcoming within our school district. And then being able to, there's a question about CDC guidelines related to quarantine. We're following the guidelines. As we see a positive rate was in, on August 12th, was over 22% within our community. It is now on a downward slide to 12%. And, you know, for our side of it, as we continue to have, you know, regress on that process, I have no problems looking at the quarantines to be able to make sure that we can keep our children in school as often as we can. And then hats off to Ruskin Elementary students. They were lovely tonight. So it's just really refreshing to see our students here and be active participant in dual-language programs. And we look forward to continuing to be champions. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. And I do have to share that we did talk to the federal government yesterday in a meeting of the Education Department regarding the American Rescue Plan. And that is one of the reasons that this letter was written to Richard Corcoran is again to put a little bit more pressure on the situation that we haven't received this. We're the only state, and it's getting to be pretty familiar that we're chanting, where is the money? Also, Superintendent Davis, not just yet, because we have other board member comments. But you do need to share with the board, when this money is up, what do we do next? Because we had two board members speak on that or ask, and they need to have the answer. Where is the money going to come after the grant is expired? Mr. Porter, I am aware of the time certain. Could you go ahead and, can we get the comments finished and then we'll go to that?
Board members, as the chair has alluded to, we have a 501 time certain for you to adopt your policies. We don't want to get too far removed from 501. So just be cognizant of that, and we can always come back to more comments if you need to. But you could do your first round of comments, and if we could do the public hearing.
Okay. Superintendent Davis, did you want to say a comment on the first, the question I just asked, and then we'll get to...
Yes, ma'am, the chair. We, one thing we talked about was building a financial strategic plan to get us through the next coming years. Ms. Johnson and her team are finalizing that plan. We will believe that it will be prepared in the first of, first in October to be able to discuss with the board and to talk about how we will leverage our strategic plan for how we will be systemic to get us to a point where we are, continue to be financially stable. So that will be upcoming and be able to present to the board.
Yes, and we have the workshop. I think it's October 5th, and we'll be discussing the next steps. Board members, Member Snively?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow up with the superintendent because it's been a few weeks now since we discussed the Department of Health and possibly partnering with the school district. And because we are obviously doing a lot of COVID chasing in the schools, administrators and teachers are having to manage that. And it is very distracting. And the feedback I'm getting from teachers and parents and students is that they are losing instructional time each day because of how much the school is expected to chase the COVID. And there's still so many questions that parents have. And then there's not a real clear understanding about the protocols when it comes to COVID. I've had parents tell me that they get, are getting phone calls from their student, not from the administration, that they're not being isolated, that they're being put in a group of people who are supposed to be quarantined, that once they're quarantined, then they get asked about their vaccination card, which a parent has already come to the school and taken their time out of their workday to come to the school and then show the vaccination card when they could have just done that to begin with. There's a lot of confusion about the protocol on when they can come back and what's the definition of close contact. You heard today from, you know, one of our public, the members of the public who had some challenges. And that's just one of probably thousands of parents who are still trying to figure out how this all fits in as far as quarantining protocols go. So I just wanted to find out if we're any closer to having the Department of Health partner with us to manage this COVID pandemic as opposed to all of our resources in our school district being used for it.
Yes, ma'am, the chair. And I'll let Ms. Brown come in because she's had the most recent conversation with the Department of Health. We were clear, I think it was around the last time we had a conversation... We were clear, I think it was around the last time we had a conversation, was the 1st of September, related to our quarantine processes and the stressors that was put on our administrators and our teachers and our staff. And, you know, it was clear, I asked our staff to go back to the Department of Health and give them 30 days to be able to figure out what the plan they would do to implement to be able to help us. In that, in lieu of that, while we're still in the process of talking what they can and cannot do, we gave schools T payrolls to be able to identify and pay staff who are working overtime. Because when I call principals on a Sunday and I'm having conversations, you know, I'm interrupting them calling, you know, individuals to let them know who's had direct or indirect contact, and it's become exhausting. So at the same time, we gave schools the option of having and hiring someone that can do 25 hours per week to help them to alleviate that process. It will be ongoing to be able to leverage ESER monies until the Department of Health or after Department of Health identifies what strategies. I would love to give all of that to the Department of Health. There's still going to be some elements that we have to give seating chart, recognition for direct or indirect contact. Indirect contact for those who've had, you know, impact less than six feet, you know, in, without a mask. For those who've had a mask, it's within three feet. So indirect contact is anybody outside of that scope related to our protocols. Our protocols have been consistent from day one, and we'll be able to send back out during a Hillsborough review. And I'll get with the Communications Department to update that, because there is multiple phases about when they can come back after a negative assessment. Because, I mean, it's confusing, to be honest. It's, you know, after four days, a negative assessment, then they can come back day five. If not, they come back seven. There's opportunity to come back 10. So Ms. Brown, can you update where we are with Department of Health? They clearly understand where we are, because we have got to free up our administrators and our staff, to Mrs. Snively's point, so they can focus on providing a quality education every day.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mrs. Snively, thank you for the question. We do continue to work with the Department of Health to try to streamline our process. I will tell you, we do have the gold standard approach to ensuring that we are quarantining the correct students. What is something that needs to be brought to everyone's attention is if we are not doing the actual quarantining and the Department of Health does, they have to follow the state rule. And the rule does not allow for excluding children from quarantine if they are less than three feet, more than three feet away and both wearing a mask. It would go back to regardless of mask and six feet. So that would put more kids in a situation where they would have to be quarantined. So that's an unintended consequence that we will have to take into consideration when we're making decisions about who's to do the quarantine, the actual contact tracing itself. We will continue to work with the Department of Health. They are working on ramping up their support at the Department of Health. I will tell you, I have to be perfectly honest with you, it will be a challenge for the Department of Health to try to manage 250 sites in trying to quarantine, but they will continue to try to improve their process. It will be, as Mr. Superintendent mentioned, a responsibility of the school to provide certain information that will have to be collected, no matter who does the actual contact tracing itself. We will have to continue to collect seating charts. We will have to collect rosters of students. We have streamlined the process in terms of how we notify parents about exposure so that school administrators and COVID leads aren't making individual calls to every single person that's affected. But I do have good news. And the good news is, we have a school, and I have to brag about this school, it's Newsome High School, that we know last year had some real concerns around the number of children that had to be quarantined. They are doing phenomenal this year. They are taking it very seriously. Their kids are masked. I think their vaccination rate is like the average. And we are quarantining fewer kids at Newsome. So I think we have to highlight where things are going really well, just like we have to highlight those things that where we have a concern. But I assure you that we will continue to work with the Department of Health to streamline our process, to ensure that we are keeping as many kids in school as possible.
Ms. Brown, did, I know we asked them to kind of potentially amend some of their dollars and expand their team. Are they in the process of doing that?
So one of the things that we have requested, they are working on a CDC grant. They have applied for a CDC grant, and there's other funding that they are applying for. That is the way that they're going to be able to ramp up their supports. But in addition to that, they are providing us additional services as well. We have requested through the state, through the Department of Health, 15 additional nurses to be able to assist us with providing actual testing in what we hope will be regional locations. So we are working on that process, and we'll partner with the Department of Health to be able to do that. Because I do believe that once we start to identify early those kids that may be positive, and the sooner we exclude them for being positive, then it reduces the number of kids that will have to be quarantined. So early identification is important. And so we are working with the Department of Health to utilize nurses that we'll get from the state to be able to do those regional testing sites.
And so those would be rapid tests?
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, they will be, we're going to try to do both rapid and PCR. We know what's most reliable is PCR. So we will, we're hopeful that we'll be able to do the PCR with a 24-hour turnaround. So we'll try to expedite that as much as possible.
That is good news. So thank you very much for sharing that. And I appreciate your efforts and your team effort in trying to enlist our Department of Health locally for a little bit more support so that we can give some relief to our administrators and our faculty at the school sites. And I look forward to continuing to see what else we can do to support them and continuing to clarify and put out there communication-wise what those COVID protocols are. That, on our website, by the way, it's not on the first splash page. It's moved down now to, you have to click to get, you know, to the second page. So maybe we can, that's probably one of the most sought-after links from parents, is what am I supposed to do now? So maybe that should be one of the first links on the page when we go there. Move that up to the top.
Yes, ma'am. Through the chair, I agree. I think we can put on the banner, and one of the banners that slides through, and just leave it there until we get that.
Whatever you want to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Tell them, they're looking for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Members Snively. We'll have Member Washington, Member Vaughn, and then we'll go to our public hearing and then employee comment.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Earlier, Mr. Davis, you said about you're getting input from teachers on the literacy and so forth, the updates. How are you doing it? Do you have a survey going out? Tell us how you're doing it.
So it's an open, well, I would say survey. It's through conversations, whether it's training, feedback on training, whether it's, you know, through site visits, informal, formal conversations with our teachers, through PLCs, with DRTs are out there, and also through any type of communications. I think one of the biggest things we've done in the literacy model is when we brought on, we have a new leader that's supervising 3K through 5, 3K through 5. She has really good, you know, relationships with our teachers. She's been here before. So I think they feel have a better relationship of being able to talk about how we strengthen the work. So not only through informal but formal, just conversations out in the field as much as we can. And then they can email us. Mr. Connor, anything else related? So as much as we can. So if anybody's watching, email us, Daniel LaCimic, Mr. Connor, myself, Angela Schrodin, to be able to make those adjustments.
Okay. Thank you. I just need to know.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Vaughn?
Thank you. Vaughn, I just wanted to clarify that there has been an ESER survey polling parents about how we would like to spend the ESER funds to get their feedback sent out. Did it go out in batches? Because I think some people got it in one wave, and then I got it later on.
I'll have to look and see if it went out in batches. And what system was used to be able to push it out?
So I just wanted to make parents aware of that, to check your email. And if you have feedback, please make sure you get that survey. Is there a closed date on it?
I don't know if there's a closed date, because it's going to be, there's months of being able to use this fund. And I think it's kind of like a school improvement plan, where we can continue to take feedback and adjust as needed.
Okay. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up was, I've been getting feedback from several different groups about just school climate and teacher morale right now, that it's at an all-time low with the amount of work that teachers have, with the pressure, with the pandemic. And I'd like to just kind of formally request, I know at some point we have a climate and culture or some kind of survey that goes out to teachers and schools, but I'd like to see if we can do one now, just to get the feedback of any way that we can help morale or things that we can do or ways that we can approach. Because I'm getting feedback that is kind of hitting a crisis point as far as teachers potentially leaving, and the last thing we want to do is lose good teachers right now. So I'd like to see whatever we can do to really connect with teachers and school staff and see if there's, what's really, you know, driving that, if there's anything as a district that we can do to offer more support and raise morale, and really kind of lean into making sure that we're doing everything we can to support our teachers and staff right now.
Thank you. Member Combs, you snuck in there. Look at these split, and then we'll get to a public hearing. Thanks.
I mean, I just had a couple of questions about the ESER 3 funding. I mean, have superintendents, especially in the larger districts, have they thought about coming together to request that, since we are the last state in the nation that hasn't received that funding?
Yes, ma'am. So actually, for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'll be at FAD's Superintendent's Conference. And this is one of the topics that I'm going to bring up about seeing if we can galvanize together to be able to write something on the behalf of not only the big seven or big eight school districts in the state, but also one as a collective from FADs. And I think the greater movement that we have as a coalition, the better opportunity we'll do it. And I, you know, maybe the Florida School Board Association may have the same mentality, but I'll definitely, it's one of my topics tomorrow that I'll bring up.
Okay, great. And then I had one other question, I guess maybe a request, and I've talked to you about this. Really looking at Pinellas and Pasco County, because they've done the opt-out, what does that look like? What are their numbers looking like as far as quarantining and everything is decreasing? Because just looking at the long-term, what, how we're doing, keeping our mask mandate, and districts like Pinellas and Pasco who haven't mandated, who had opt-out policies, I'd like to see what that looks like as we get further and further into the next 30 days. Instead of just waiting till the last minute, let's look at all of that in the surrounding districts as well. So I'd like to make a request for that.
Yes, ma'am, the chair. That, I have worked with Mrs. Brano. She's working on capturing all that information. And I think it'd be really good to be able to see how the overall impact they've had. And as it relates to any questions related to morale, you know, morale across this, you know, state, I've talked to many superintendents, they're in the same position. And our survey will always be kind of towards the end of the year to match what we did last year. Well, I asked principals to reach back out to their staffs and do something internally at their schools, because they need to be able to, ones to be able to understand how they can particularly help them, then we'll be able to help them through that process.
Thank you, Member Combs. Thank you, Superintendent Davis. Right now, we're going to go ahead and initiate our public hearing. This is the public hearing on the adoption of new and revised policies. Public hearing on adoption for the new and revised policies, adoption process. This is a requirement pursuant to state law and board policy. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak about the policies that are recommended for adoption by the board and to provide input to the board. The policies were advertised and have been available for public review. Board members, this is part one, and we have already went through those policies. Mr. Jim Porter, will you now highlight this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. As the chair said, these were policies that you all vetted thoroughly at your workshop about a month and a half ago. Some were brought by board members, some were brought by staff. You hashed out the details. They've been amended pursuant to the comments, and they're ready for your vote. This is a public hearing, so if any member of the public would like to speak, now would be the time to let them speak. And if not, then you could have a board vote.
I think we have, Ms. Amato? And good evening.
Board, I'm here to speak to you today about, there's two policies. One is my concern about the suicide update policy in the assessment portion. I understand that, I'm a licensed clinical social worker as a school board member, Karen Perez is, and my, the wording in the policy is a little bit hinky in the assessment portion. So yes, a person, a layperson can see some signs and then do a referral, but an assessment, which I consider as a mental health professional, is an actual assessment in a paper, that should be done by a mental health professional. So because there are liability concerns if a non-mental health professional does that. So it's something for the school board to consider. The other policy I would like to discuss is the discrimination policy against our students with disabilities. This is a systemic issue within Hillsborough County public schools. And when we speak about equity and equal access to free and appropriate public education, that includes our students with disabilities, especially our students with disabilities who have multiple other vulnerabilities, as homelessness, or children of color, or military-connected children, or highly mobile children. So what I am seeing is, in one issue, I'll just, let's just start with the basics. When we first passed the capital expense tax, I was assured that we were going to, the committee was going to discuss about bringing all of our schools that are in that date and timeline, that are supposed to be ADA compliant, up to date, and that has yet to be discussed. Okay? So I had a civil rights complaint for my student who was using a wheelchair. And for example, let's just use this building. The ramp is over there at a closed door, not where security is. So if I have my child, I have to go all the way over there and have to get someone to run over to security to say, "Please open that door." So I can tell you, I would challenge everyone in our district to have a day to utilize their school campus in a wheelchair. I can tell you, most of our campuses are not accessible. The doors are made for hurricanes, they're too heavy. The kids can't open them independently. So if you have a disability, you want to be as independent as possible. Let's just start there. And when we look at our policy, we have two policies on board that are, that are against, that are actually discriminatory for our service dogs. So our service dogs, my daughter used one in Newsome High School, and I trained the staff. And one of the issues is the policy says that they have to have all of these things that are not legally required. The Department of Health manages the rabies, like whether my dog is compliant. That is not the district's right to decline access for a service dog. So that is part of that school board policy that has to be amended. And there's also other issues with the service dog policy that is on, that you guys have for school board policy. So when you redo this policy, please go back and review the service dog policy. The ADA is very clear, you can ask two questions. Is that service dog for your disability? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amato. Board members, I will now, seeing no other public speakers, I will now close the meeting. And at this time, I need a motion and a second to adopt the policies. I have a motion by Member Combs and a second by Member Washington. Any discussion? Whoops. Member Perez?
Yes, I would like for that, the concerns on those policies to be discussed. Or addressed, please.
Tell me which ones?
The ones that Ms. Amato bought out.
Is there any explicit ones related?
Yeah, the one on the service dogs.
The service dog one is for the future, that's not, that's.
Okay. And then the one on the assessments. I thought, okay. Okay, perfect.
We'll have staff, Mr. Gibson will connect, and then we can provide an update through my follow-ups.
Okay. Because I have a concern if laypersons are completing those assessments myself. So I would like to know what the answer to that.
I'll get it, we'll be able to get to that and determine who's conducting the assessments. I know we have to conduct assessments all the time with all of our facilities related to code and accessibility. And I'll get the.
But it says the suicide.
Ma'am?
Who's completing the assessment?
Threat assessment through suicide or suicide assessments?
Yeah, the suicide.
It's our rapid assessment teams, our counselors are involved, we have psychologists involved. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. I just want to make that point of clarification. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Perez. Member Snively?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to get clarification on Policy 6330, which is acquisition of professional architecture, engineering, construction management, landscape, architectural, or land surveying services. That's page one of three on Policy 6330. There's a section in there with regard to the professional services selection committee, which I have expressly made my opinion about in previous meetings. But I have a question with regard to line 21, where it says, "Or one member from the affected school site," which I'm not sure what that means. What does, is it, should it be one employee from that school site? Or one member of what? So the paragraph reads, there'll be, "There shall be a professional services selection committee. This committee will evaluate and rank prospective providers of professional services. This committee will evaluate and rank prospective providers of professional services. The committee shall have seven voting members: Chief of Operations or Designee, Chief Diversity Officer, Representative, one member of the Hillsborough County Council PTA/PTSA, or one member of the Citizens Advisory Committee, or one member from the affected school site." What does that mean?
I believe Mr. Parkus will be the appropriate one to answer that.
He would, and I believe this, the affected school site would be the site that would be impacted.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking about the site. What is one member?
Oh, one member, oh, we have to define, no, we probably have to provide greater clarity about who that one member potentially may be.
Right. I mean, is there an opportunity to add it that to an employee or administrator from the school site?
You absolutely have the right to edit it. I don't know what the intent of it was, I didn't draft it.
I would imagine it's one, an administrator from the school site.
I would say that'd be correct.
So could, could we agree to do that, or does it require a motion?
No, it doesn't, it requires a motion, yes.
Okay. So I would like to move? Or do I do it, do we do it at the end?
No, you do it now, because that would be amending the main motion.
I would like to move to.
The appropriate motion would be to amend Policy 6330.
Line 21, to read, "One or one administrator from the affected."
From the affected school site. We, and I'm just saying this for the record, we would strike the word "member" and substitute the word "administrator." And that would be.
That was my motion.
Do you need a second? Okay, so now, Madam Chair, you need to vote on the amendment.
Okay, board members, vote on the amendment, yes or no? Any discussion on that? Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on the one-word change. And it is unanimous.
So now you're back to the main motion to approve all the policies.
We're back. Board members, if there's no further discussion, please vote when your lights are on. And if it passes, it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Member Snively, for bringing that to our attention. Okay, the employee comment is next, but we're not quite there yet, so you'd be surprised. We're getting ahead of ourselves for once. We're going to go into the discussion agenda, and we're going to change the order just a tad. We're going to hit the 1103 Application Approval for Madder Academy Hills Middle School. That's 1103. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
To the Chair, this is application approval for Madder Academy Hills Middle School. This is a, as you know, it came to us as a traditional charter school for approval. With that denial, that now they've come back for the application to be a high-performing, which they qualify for. As you know, Madder is throughout the state, and they have highly performing quality charter schools that have been, be recognized. And what they're asking here is to come back through, through Hillsborough County, back in, as a high-performing institution. This is going to be a middle school from grade six through eight. They have aspirations to have around, in a five-year span, 594 students. They'll progress from 154 students started in year one, transition to over 300 students, and then over the next couple of years, staircase all the way to 594 students.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by, oh, sorry. Sorry. Member Snively, I need a second. Second by Member Hahn. And discussion, Member Combs pulled the item, Member Combs?
I just pulled the item, really to just make sure we clarify why this by law has to be approved, and if, and if that could be clarified by you, Superintendent, or Ms. Delang, a little bit about how the differentiation and the application and how it's different. So if you could do that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I have Dr. Delang to come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening to everyone. Yes, a high-performing system is, has a completely different law and has a completely different application, model application. The model application for a high-performing system includes 12 sections versus 22 sections of a regular charter application. So it's less, it's less to review, simply because the entity, which is the system, the high-performing system, has been vetted by the DOE. And the DOE has already designated the system as high performance. This particular application is a replication of a Miami-Dade school that is an A. The system itself, the Madder Academy system, has 30 schools already in the state of Florida, and I believe all of them, except one, are a, have, have, serve minority populations a 90% or above, and have either As or Bs, except one C.
Thank you, Dr. Delang. Member Combs, any further questions?
No, I have no further questions. Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome.
See, we have a comment. Member Snively?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just while you're here, this particular application appears to meet all of the requirements that the statute sets forth. Is that correct?
That's correct, Ms. Snively. The review team reviewed it, that the review team included different departments, and they met all the statutory requirements.
Including Mr. Gibson, our legal counsel as well? Or who, who reviews it for legal?
Or, just, it went, just a regular review based on the model application for high-performing systems.
Okay. Yeah. I just, so the team basically reviewed it for statutory.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, board members, thank you, Member Snively. Seeing no further discussion, please vote when your lights are on. It is unanimous. Oops, sorry. Member Vaughn is dissenting. Thank you. And it, the motion passes. Just as a footnote.
No pun intended.
No pun intended, and I'm not going to say exactly what it is, but Member Perez will be not at the dais, but she will participate virtually, so just as a footnote record. Okay, we're going to go back to the front end, and at 301, this is the graduation date for 2021-2022 school year. As, excuse me, Superintendent Davis, will you highlight this item?
Yes, ma'am. This is the approval for the graduation rates for the 21-22 school year. We are, we want to make certain that we are very transparent about what, you know, the dates that we are going to identify and being able to get to our families, so that we can make certain that, you know, any arrangements can be made from, from parents and travels. We know that this will be inclusive of 28 traditional schools, eight adult education centers, three technical centers, in addition with four career centers in Hillsborough K-12 Virtual. And at the same token, this identifies the Exceptional Students Center graduations as well. You will see an increase. The increase is due to the number of days that we had to leverage for rehearsals, and that's also inclusive of cleanings as well. Those additional days, sorry.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. Board members, I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by Member Combs. I have a second by Member Snively. Discussion, we'll start out with Member Vaughn, who pulled the item.
Thank you. I just wanted parents to have an opportunity to see this. Every year, when it gets closer to graduation, I have parents asking me how we selected the dates, how far in advance we noticed them, as Superintendent Davis mentioned. They like to make travel plans or summer plans, so I just wanted this to be on the discussion item for anybody who's watching to have an opportunity to kind of see these dates and see the school beforehand, so they know that this is proactive and we do this far in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Snively?
Thank you. I had a question just about some of the costs associated with the rehearsals. And so the last year, the schools did not use the facility to do the rehearsal for the graduation. But previous years, I know that we have had rehearsal at the fairground for the students. However, there is additional expenditure, anywhere maybe between $10,000 and $15,000 to be able to have a rehearsal at the fairground, which includes cleaning and everything else that goes along with it. However, it went so well last year with the schools rehearsing on-site, as opposed to everybody having to try and get over to the fairgrounds to try and do a rehearsal. So I'm just wondering if we could reduce our, the cost for, for the contract with the, their fairgrounds by letting, allowing the schools to just continue to do rehearsals at their school site. Now, honestly, I have not asked any principals this, so I hope they don't like, are looking at me going, are you crazy? That, it's easy. I don't know which one is easier, honestly. But I do know that it's less expensive to do it at the school site. There's less travel for students back and forth to the fairground, and the ceremonies went off without a hitch last year. So that tells me, do we really need to expend the money to, and all the resources and effort to get over to the fairground to do rehearsals there? Or can we just do them on our school sites and save the money?
Yes, ma'am, and definitely we can look at it. This will be the tall, related to the, the contract. We can go back and have conversations with our leaders. Leaders really wanted to have the rehearsals. It is a thousand dollars per day. I say rehearsals at the, at the fairgrounds. It's a thousand dollars per day. In addition to that, it's a thousand dollars to clean as well per day. And I'll let Mrs. Bayes kind of address some of the conversations they've had through Mrs. Fawcett.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. The additional thought that you might consider for last year is that we did not have any processionals. The students were seated originally, they did get to go up on stage, they did not have a processional entering or leaving. That's what requires the greatest rehearsal time, and for them to be able to do that on-site. So that was part of the reason also why we didn't need the rehearsals, just to take that into consideration.
And through that, we definitely can go back. We do have some, some leaders that do a really nice job, and they leverage their football stadium, and they, and they practice. So we can go back and have conversations with leaders and determine who may use the facility and who may want to use that, and then we can potentially reduce.
And I certainly don't want to add anything.
No, it's fine.
It's really complicated to, to do them on-site as opposed to going to the, the fairgrounds. I don't want to add any stress to principals who already have so much on their plates. It's just a suggestion, and I would appreciate if you could, you know, maybe survey them and say, what's, if we can save some money there, you know, is it, could we, could we just keep them on school sites? So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Snively. And that would be my concern, too. We, we have to make sure the principals are on-board, and seeing that in evidence, I think every one of the board members would feel better. So having said that, when can we see that deliverance of information?
Yes, ma'am, to the Chair, we can work with our, our high school principals. They have a meeting every, every Thursday, and so we'll, we'll get feedback along that. You know, with approval this evening, we'll be able to know that this is the tall it will be, and if we're able to reduce, we can continue to reduce in that process, so we'll have to come back to the board.
Board members, at this time, please vote when your lights are on. Oh, with Member Perez, is she on right now?
She's on yet, so she would.
With, okay, with Member Perez.
Yes.
Okay, Member Perez, we just had an opportunity to vote. Oh, you voted yes? Okay. Yeah, drive carefully now. All right. Okay, it's unanimous, it passes. Thank you, board members. 402, Negotiated Salary Agreement for the 2020-2021 and 2021 to 2022 School Years with the Hillsborough Classroom Teachers Association. And Superintendent Davis, will you highlight this item?
Yes, ma'am. This is a negotiated salary agreement with, with the school district and the Hillsborough Classroom Teachers Association. This is for our support staff, which is inclusive of paraprofessionals, assistant teachers, these are nurses, clerical staff, plus rider attendants. And this is to be able to give a $500 for the 2021 school year, one-time bonus, and a $500 bonus for the 21-22 school year, with a total of $1,000. We know that the Department of Education gave, used, you know, disaster relief payments to our principals and teachers, and we want to be able to, to match that same intensity and thank our, our staff for their hard work and dedication, because, you know, these are individuals that were with us along the way and have done some remarkable work.
Board members, I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by Member, Member Combs, a second by Member Washington. Will the, oh, excuse me, Member Vaughn, you pulled this item?
Thank you, yes. This item and the next item, I just, again, I wanted to highlight, because I've had several people reach out to me and ask if we were going to offer staff something equivalent to the bonus that, from the state, the teachers and other first responders got. So I just, again, I wanted to highlight these, so that the public is clear that we are, you know, offering a bonus to our other staff members. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Any further discussion? If not, please vote when your lights are on. And Member Perez? Is that a yay or a nay?
Yes. Yay.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, board members, at this time, we're going to have to back, stop right where we are, and we're going to get into employee input. We have three employees, Mr. Rob Creek, Valerie Chuchman, and Heidi Glick. And, good evening. We want a weather report, too. We hear thunder, so let us know. Mr. Creek?
Good evening. Are you asking for a weather report? It's wet.
Oh, okay. I heard.
It's swamp season here in Florida. Hopefully, the weather will be getting better, but it looks a little monsoon-y out there. We're hoping that. Member Perez is doing okay, and she was calling in from that submarine a minute ago.
Oh.
But, good evening, everyone, and thank you for the motion that just passed, and recognizing all of the other employees in our district that were kind of left out, but were also first responders during the pandemic. So we certainly appreciate that and know that they are hardworking and well-deserved individuals. But tonight, I'm here to talk about our recommitment to having our professional learning communities, our PLCs. And I would like to remind everybody what these meetings should be. In short, these meetings need to be organic and defined by the professionals that are parts of those meetings. And if you're unaware of what a PLC meeting is, it's a collaboration, it's a grade-level meeting, it's a subject-specific meeting that takes place with educators. And when they're effective, they're discussing teaching strategies, lessons to be delivered, and assessments that drive that instruction. As a classroom teacher, the best PLCs that I've been part of discuss what the experts call the critical questions. What do we want kids to learn? How do we know that they've learned it? And then what are we doing for the kids that didn't quite get it? When we have really good PLCs, they focus on these questions, and they talk about them, and how they're going to actually help the kids move their learning gains. So as we encourage these collaboration meetings, let's not require PLC notes for, for our administrators. Let's remember that these are professional educators working hard to meet the needs of their students, not the needs of documentation. Our teachers need to work for their students, not the other adults in the school, who, by the way, are super busy as well, as well. So unless there is something that needs to be communicated to all, and for administrators to be part of, let's not require notes that are documenting that meeting, because now we're spending time, instead of grading papers, creating lessons, documenting the meeting that we have, for the administrators who are working harder and busier than ever before. So treating our employees as professionals is a great way to show true appreciation for the amazing work that they continue to do every day before and throughout the pandemic. So, thank you. Salute out there. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Creek. Okay, Ms. Chuchman, and followed by Ms. Glick. And good evening.
Good evening, board members, superintendents. I just wanted to give you all a little mental health check. Our teachers are not okay. I wish I could say it's because of COVID, but that seems to be the least of their concerns. Let's start with technology. Intune has many out of sorts. The antiquated computers in the classroom are running even slower than before. It's like you all put a Tesla motor into a Ford Pinto. EdConnect won't load, programs fail to run, and there's general confusion on where to find important information. Is it on Teams? SharePoint? Staff Hub? Canvas? Frustrating would be one of the nicer words I've heard used to describe the technology situation. Beyond technology, there are also unrealistic expectations being placed on our educators, especially when considering the current circumstances. Internalization, impact reviews, PLC accountability, district walkthrough, look fours. I'm not even sure what half of those are, but this is what's being asked of teachers beyond their typical workload during an atypical year. But let's just say that all of these things can be accomplished during their planning time. That was a joke. See, because teachers will say, what planning time? They're constantly being pulled for coverage. No subs. Testing. Vacancies. It's hard enough to find time to use the bathroom, let alone plan for an impact review. If the district personnel really want to be helpful, you could help us cover these areas. Honestly, what I'm hearing from people is that it is just too much. This year is harder than last year. I know we all came in expecting this, last year to be the worst year ever, right? This year is hard. I've never seen so many people so stressed out this early in the year. Terrible technology, unrealistic expectations, having to cover classes instead of planning. Oh, hey, I haven't even mentioned COVID. People said they're, they are end-of-the-year tired, but it's not even October. Superintendent Davis, I know that you heard a lot of this last night in the STACK Committee meeting, so thank you for giving teachers the voices for that. I'm just asking if you could all could pump the brakes on some of this? this and listen to your teachers because, because they're not okay right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chuchman. Um, we're listening. And, Ms. Glick?
Good evening, everybody. So what they both just said. In addition to that, I want to thank you for holding strong on the mask mandate. I want to remind you how important it is. One of the speakers earlier said there are zero children in Hillsborough County schools with COVID. Gee, I wonder why? Because we're all wearing masks. And I don't know where she goes, but everywhere I go, the grocery store, uh, the movies, for a walk around my neighborhood, people are wearing masks. So thank you so much. And I do want to remind you, I know our next 30 days is coming up soon. We've had a huge decrease. But think of it like cancer. When you're going through cancer treatments and you're getting chemo and your tumor shrinks, you don't stop with the chemo. You keep going until the disease is obliterated. We may not be able to obliterate COVID right now, but the masks are very, very important. We're not out of the woods yet. So I just wanted to remind you of that and to keep that in mind and to keep voting your conscience and exactly what our medical personnel are telling us. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Glick. That concludes our employ-- oh, I'm sorry. Superintendent Davis, please.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. And I don't mean to be disrespectful and cut in, but, you know, I, I want to make sure we clarify some, some of the elements. And thank you for all of our employees to speak. And you know what? I do agree that we thought that this year from a start would be a little bit easier. And it is getting better now related to the number of quarantines and COVID, but the stressors are still there. That's, it is a reality. Um, as it relates to technology, I'll let Mr. Weeks kind of address technology because I do agree that technology continues, continues to be a barrier. We said that alarmingly 18 months ago when we had 28, you know, a limited number of accessibility units for our classrooms to be able to help. And at the same time, infrastructure issues and Wi-Fi connectivity issues. So, um, we'll continue to address that through half-cent to be able to replace. And then also, um, related to coverage, absolutely correct. The sub-rate is between 51 to 57%. It is very taxing, very tiring because, you know, while we had a really nice opportunity to increase the payments with, uh, you know, with a MOU, with ACTA, moving it from a certain, uh, number to a, uh, you know, $20 per coverage, it still doesn't neglect the fact that it's taxing on our teachers. And being able to, every single day when someone's out in quarantine or someone's out due to illness, being able to split up classrooms is, is, becomes difficult when teachers are trying to teach their own class load. So we thank our teachers for being able to help with that process. We're trying to hold Kelly accountable, but every vendor that I speak to with superintendents and that Marie speaks to across, uh, throughout the state, they're having the same stressors. We are doing, uh, a number of, uh, open job fairs. I think one is going to be on the, I think, 29th, to be able to make certain that we are opening, uh, open hiring to bring teachers, bus drivers, support staff to our school district, to be able to make sure we fill the, the vacancies. And, and also related to PLC notes, I agree, we should not, I mean, I don't know what, no administrator should be taking any type of notes. They should be there as a facilit-- help to be a facilitator, to be a think partner in PLCs because, as Mr. Creek just spoke about it, the beautiful part of PLCs are when teachers are working collectively to build upon the information they have every single day through their classrooms about student readiness levels, about what core concepts and standards have to be taught, how we leverage instructional materials. There are no notes, and, and we'll make certain we clear this up through our regional, uh, through our chiefs and regional superintendents, there's no notes to be taken. Only note should be taken is how can I help that teacher? How can I help that, you be able to get to the champion to the finish line, to remove barriers? They have too much on their plate right now. I know that. We understand that. So I, I appreciate that bringing brought to, to our attention this evening because that should not be the case. And then related to the, the impact reviews, we are having impact reviews at, or I would say, close to 100 schools. And this is, you know, I don't want teachers, if they're watching, to be stressed. And, and if they are, this is not about, not to be disrespectful about teachers. It's about students, what they're actually doing. Is the curriculum that we're asking them to implement, is it going to be, uh, is it being effective? How are we leveraging it? Are we leveraging the frameworks? Are there additional adjustments that need to be made? How can we tier schools? What support from the district office can we help to be able to put, uh, some action planning linked to their school improvement process to be able to create lift? And, um, I don't disagree, timing's not always great, but we can never take our eye off the ball of instruction. I will tell you, while this is the last year of the FSA, accountability will be in the forefront. Grades will be extended. They're not going to be held harmless as they did last year. They're going to be, um, uh, you know, in, in, in front of our schools and our students. And as you see what happened last year with the exacerbation or the last 18 months, we got to continue to push forward, be sensitive in that process. And please, I would encourage, um, you know, talk to principals about impact reviews they've already had. They've been very positive about it. And I hope they're turnkeying that with teachers to be able to figure out how they adjust and what supports they need through PLCs, through lesson studies, coaching cycles, selectively abandoning, updating curriculum guides, those types of information, so that we can help them alleviate some of those stressors a, along the way. So I appreciate all the comments. We'll work and make sure it's a concentration with our chiefs, our regional superintendents, and our leaders to be able to make it seamless. And thank to our teachers and support staff and leaders. They have done, they've been remarkable.
And Superintendent Davis, uh, yes, I would like to, uh, at least talk a little bit about the, um, the strategy that we're looking at towards addressing the technology concerns.
Mr. Weeks, can you go ahead and stand up so we can not only see who you are and introduce yourself and your position? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Porter, did you?
You have an agenda you're following and you have items that you need to get through.
Yeah, all right. Yeah.
If you need to do that, I mean, there's a, you can do it. But I mean, you just, you have agenda items here that you need to continue.
Yeah, toy, uh, yes, all right. So the point is, and there's a lot of points, Superintendent Davis, there's a lot for, for you and to, to meet. And the expectations are high and it's necessary that we address them. So, uh, moving right along, 403, negotiate salary agreement for the 2020, 2021 and 2021-2022 school years with the Hillsborough School Employees Federation. I need, oh, Superintendent Davis, will you highlight this item?
Yes, ma'am. This is a negotiation salary increase for the 2020, 21, 22, 21, 22 school year with, uh, the school district and also Hillsborough Employee Federation. This is for student nutrition, individuals with transportation, security, custodial staff, and we appreciate their hard work. This is, once again, matches the $500 for the 2021 school year, $500 for the 2122 school year, which is total a thousand dollars one-time bonus, to be able to, again, to match what was provided to teachers and principals in our school district.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by, uh, Member Washington and a second by Member Combs. Uh, any discussion? Member Vaughn, are you, uh, wanting to duplicate what you discussed? Okay. Any others? Seeing none, please vote when your lights are on. And, uh, Member Washington? Okay, uh, Member Perez?
I go, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Board members, unanimous. Going down to the information items only, uh, this will be presented by Jim Porter. This is a update on the, um, redistricting. And, I mean, Mr. Porter, would you continue?
I'd be happy to. And Ms. Davis is also involved in this update. So Board members, this has to do with your, your district seats redistricting. This is not boundary changes for schools. This is your districts that you ran in. Um, we've had a conversation earlier. You'll recall that I advise that the county commission, um, has to redistrict every 10 years when the census data comes out. And they are in the process of doing that. The school board may redistrict if, uh, in an odd number of year, which this is, based on the census data. And we are meeting this week internally. Um, Ms. Davis and I, as well as Ms. Dickerson and Chris Farkas's division, have been reaching out to the county. Um, they're sharing their data with us. The county is in the process now of looking at, uh, different options for what their districts will look like. We do not exactly match the county because they have four district seats and we have five. So it's not an apples-to-apples, um, comparison. But we will be providing you regular updates on that and the data and to decide what you want to do. I will advise that unlike the county commission, even if you do decide to redistrict, it will not affect anyone sitting at this dais. Um, again, at the county commission level, and this engendered some confusion because people ask you all a lot of questions. Everyone on the county commission, except for the Chair, has to run again for reelection in 2022. If you do decide to redistrict, that, the ones that are still up for reelection will have to run, but the ones that aren't, won't be affected by that. So what, this is just to let you know and the public know that we're working on that internally. We are working with the county and will continue to provide regular updates.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. And that's a very good clarification. Board members, do you have any questions? Member Snively?
Thank you. Um, due to the population growth in Hillsborough County, do you know if the Board of County Commission is considering expanding to nine seats versus seven seats? Or at what point do we say there are so many people that one board member or one commissioner just can't possibly represent such a large area with so many constituents? When does that happen?
To my knowledge, that's not part of the discussion at the county. Um, but that's something that, that could happen. And that's something that the school board could consider as well. But I don't believe that's on the table at this point. I know that there are at least five or six maps that they're considering, um, drawn by different board members and different people that are, um, interested in this.
I would, I would love to explore that as a school board just because currently we are already stretched thin, I think, as school board members. We have, uh, each of us have, um, probably 60 to 75 schools that we represent in our, in each of our districts. And of course, you know, the, at-large seats have, uh, over 240 sites that we represent. And I would love to do, just do a comparison with maybe other districts that have, I think, Miami Dade and Broward. Does Broward have nine also?
Yeah.
So, but--
We can do that. I'd be happy to provide that data.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Member Snively, excellent suggestion. Member Hahn?
Uh, Mr. Porter, I, can you share the timeline? Because I know the county is, as you said, they're, they're already looking at maps and we haven't even really started this process. So I know just based on the growth in South County, I'm sure Ms. Snively and I have, um, probably tens of thousands of new constituents. And so what is our timeline for redistricting?
Sure. So we're meeting internally on Thursday with our crowd to review the data that the county's provided us. And at that point, I think we'll, one of the things we'll look at is whether the population increase, especially in your respective districts, has created a disparity in the number of districts. And typically, a disparity is described as anything over 10%. Um, and if we find that, that's the case, then we'll be bringing that information to you. Um, so it, it's going to, um, go more quickly now that we have the data. Just to put it in perspective, the data was, uh, the census data was expected, um, originally in April. And I don't think the county got it until July or August. So it's been behind. Um, but the, for your purposes, the timeline, we'll meet internally this week. We'll provide another update at the next board meeting and we'll go from there. And at the next board meeting, we'll probably have something more concrete to share with you and seek your guidance on.
And then, um, when we, if we do decide to redraw the maps, who does that? Is that internal or is that an external contract?
It could be either one. Um, so you will be the ultimate deciders of that. So we could, um, the staff, typically it would fall under Chris Farkas's department with Amber Dickerson. Um, no one is currently in the role that they were 10 years ago when the district or the school district sort of looked at this. But we, um, we could use the Planning Commission as a resource. We could use our own staff or we could hire someone. And again, that would go into, rolled into a recommendation if it was decided that it, uh, really should be looked at to redistrict.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that's piquing our curiosity. So, um, let's, let's look at that as a, as a, an actual topic. And, uh, so thank you, Mr. Porter. Lots to think about. Um, think, the, the populations are definitely expanding. I, I know it for a fact. Um, so at any rate, uh, let's go ahead, Board members. It's your turn. You have comments that you would like to share. And here we go. Put yourself in the queue. And, you know, uh, Member Perez, I don't know if you want to share something, but if you'd like to go first, so you can rest your foot, would you like to share first?
Yeah, yeah. I, thank you so much. I appreciate it. So I just need to ask a couple of, um, um, questions, um, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead. We just need to, for you to talk a little louder.
Okay. With the, with the issue, I'm, I'm just gonna ask this. Um, and, um, Superintendent, please indulge me. Throughout the nation, um, our students are taking on challenges. And these challenges are TikTok. And they're encouraging our students to cause major damage to our schools. Um, here in Hillsborough County Public Schools, we're not immune to this challenge. But my concern is that we have major damage to schools, um, especially me, since I'm a major advocate for putting money into improving our schools. So with that said, some of our schools here in Hillsborough County are hysterical. Is that correct, Superintendent?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay. So what is the price tag we're looking at for repairing damages caused by this challenge, especially in our district, and, um, where we are attempting to right our finances?
Yes, ma'am, the Chair. We, we do see that there are challenges across the nation where, where students are actively engaged into, um, you know, decisions, whether it's going to a restroom, ripping out sinks, whether it's going to a vending machine and popping it open and taking all of the elements out of the vending machine, whether it's just causing vandalism. Um, our side of it is that we have to do, we are continuing to do, and our leaders are identifying those students who are making those poor decisions, continue to allow them to address them to the code student of conduct, and then work through the, uh, the law enforcement to determine whether or not restitution can be a part of that process. Um, for us, we, anytime that damages cause to our facilities, uh, you said it spot-on, related to our finances, we don't have the endless pot of money to continue to, uh, to readdress, uh, you know, rebuilding, remodeling our facilities with the restrooms. We do know our exit signs being pulled down, alarms being, uh, you know, addressed, infrastructure being pulled out of the walls, all of that. So from our side of it, we will, uh, work with law enforcement for restitution as often as much as we can to be able to create accountability. And while we know, understand that, that parents didn't make this decision, there has to be accountability because, you know, we just don't have endless pockets. And I don't know if, if Chief Newman wants to speak from a law enforcement perspective, but they are actively engaged in, along with our chiefs and our regional superintendents, in to, to being able to address our students with making certain they're doing, making the right decisions every single day with positive behavior supports, recognizing those who are doing the right things within our schools. Chief Newman?
Miss Perez?
Yeah, for Chief--
Hi, how are you?
Yeah, for Chief--
The, whenever we have any type of damage--
I have a quick question for you and then I'll let you speak as well.
Sure, go ahead.
Students don't understand or realize causing intentional damage. Is that, what kind of crime is that?
Vandalism. So in, in this, it'd be criminal mischief. There is a cutoff between a misdemeanor and a felony at a thousand dollars. Um, what law enforcement does, whether it's a civil citation, restorative practices, or they're actually physically arresting someone, that goes to the victim's advocacy team over at the state attorney's office. They're in contact with C.C. Culpepper's team. Whenever we might have a burglary where they steal equipment out of our sites, or they break something, or just vandalism. And that's part of the sentencing that they require when they have a pre-sentence investigation that the student, or in this case, the defendant, would have to pay back. So the state attorney's office has a process to seek out restitution, whether it's a civil citation or where criminal charges are actually levied against the student.
Okay. And, you know, what this is due to our students' safety in the schools, especially when they're unable to use damage back? Can I ask that question?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, it, it really creates a pause and delay in accessibility to our students, especially if, then, you know, one of our schools with two sinks were, were ripped out. Um, we address it immediately with, with our teams to go in, but it takes time. Takes time to go in to, uh, to repair any potential plumbing. Takes time right now with COVID to be able to order maybe a matched sink that goes into that restroom. So what it does, it creates an inconvenience for our students, which may be, which may hinder them in, in transfer time from one class to a next. They may not be able to use a first-floor hallway that's next to their class and maybe have to go to a second floor. And that's going to cause a student not to be on time and going to be tardy. And it just no, and then when they're tardy, they're disrupting the educational momentum from a teacher who starts their bellwork. So it, there's a major impact to it. So the biggest thing is for us to, uh, and I'm not, for us to address it swiftly, to continue to be proactive versus reactive in these situations, and to be able to make certain our stu, coach our students to make the right decisions every day within our classrooms.
Especially, uh, Chief Newman, we're in the district where we're really addressing the issue of the school to prison pipeline. And we're trying to, you know, lower our numbers. You know, this is really, you know, um, I gotta tell you, it's been very disheartening for me to see this activity. I'm really, really honored for you. Um, and I hope our students who are hearing, or the parents who are listening to this, will have a conversation with their students. I really hope so. And real-- And real quick also, addressing District 5, I have requested a deep dive into the busing of the students, you know, across the county, and how many of those students are bused, the effect to those students and their education, extracurricular activities, their inability to join sports, have tutoring after school, the parent and teacher meetings that are affected, in addition, you know, to the supports to the students that are eliminated when these students are bused across the district. Are we doing anything to look into that, as far as how many students are bused, how their education is affected, the ways that these students are bused? Have we listened to that yet? Have I read that to the board?
Yes ma'am, through your request, our team is finalizing and reviewing that. I will get back with Mr. Farkas, he's at Leadership Florida. And so when he gets back, we'll have a conversation of where he is, and we'll reach out to Mr. Beekman tomorrow, but they, the ask was creative when they were transitioning from, you know, the number of students that were being moved from District 5 to other schools. And you said it well, not being able to have potential availability to co-curricular, extracurricular activities, tutoring while on campus, we'll definitely get that information to the board.
All right, and one more thing, I remember Combs had mentioned about how, you know, the other districts are addressing this SRR3 findings that were not applied for, and collaborating with these other districts and the superintendents to hold, you know, the leadership accountable, especially understanding that these funds affect our students, their education in the future. But I want to thank all those elected officials, community leaders, and the parents who have been very vocal regarding our SRR funding, especially from the state department. Thank you so much for allowing me to talk.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, Member Perez, and do elevate your foot, and we hope you feel better soon. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pablo, could you, put it up for me, please? I, I had opportunity to volunteer at Robles School Lunchroom, the food service. You know, I didn't realize that during that period of time, they work hard preparing the food for the students, because every, every 30 minutes more students are coming in. And I was standing there like for about three or four hours, either serving food or making sandwiches and so forth. And I tell you, we don't realize how hard those people work until you have been in there watching them or working along with them. And then, you know, after they finish the food, and they love the students, they know all the students, and they, after that, then they have to clean the cafeteria, they have to clean the lunchroom area. They really work hard, I tell you, I didn't realize that. And they was kind of excited because they said they never had a school board member to come in and work with them. I didn't have time to talk, we worked. I was really working, and it was, it was difficult, it was difficult to the fact that we ripping and running all the time, you're not, you don't have time to just relax. During that period of time, you're moving around, you're getting sandwiches, you're getting stuff ready for the next group to come in. So I really want to give them a shot at Robles and their cafeteria, food service, for doing a great job. Those ladies work hard. And the kids know you, because, because when I was online serving food, they said, "You knew here." I said, "Yes, I am." So they recognize, you know, they recognize what's going on. So I want to end, I want to end it in saying like President Theodore Roosevelt, people don't care how much you know until you know how much, until they know how much you care. And I really got to say this for Robles Lunchroom personnel, they really cared about their students, and they cared about me being in there, showing me how hard they worked. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Washington, and your work is so appreciated, so thank you for sharing. Member Combs?
I just wanted to, once again, talk about Hispanic Heritage Month, and just making sure that we really go out there. I know that Melissa Margado and Ruth Vallegas gave me this wonderful book, and hashtag Hillsborough County Public School Reads, we'll be going out to different schools and we'll be reading books. I also want to really recognize the dual-language programs. We have seven dual-language programs in the district, and five of them happen to be in my district, that's Canela, Deer Park, West Chase, Bellamy, and Crestwood. I'll be out at, I'll be out at Deer Park doing the reading on October 1st, and then I'll also be out at Bellamy coming up. And Bellamy is the first school in the entire district that is doing a dual-language VPK program, so that is really exciting. As we see the expansion of VPK throughout our, throughout our country, and we see more funding, I think it's really exciting to see the dual-language program, and there's no question about that. The really, you get the essence of what's happening in schools is by visiting schools and mostly talking to children, that's where you really get an essence of that. I'm fortunate enough to still have a child in Hillsborough County Public Schools, but one of the things that I will be doing throughout my time as a board member is I will be substituting, teaching on a regular basis. I will have my second assignment coming up this Tuesday, so I'm really excited about that, to give teacher relief, but also mainly to talk to children and find out how they feel, what things are working, what things they feel like we need to change, because at the end of the day, we're all here about children, and I think that is really the true customer, you know, is the kids and what's happening and how they're feeling, and what we can do to promote learning, and also the social and emotional impact that children are having. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Combs, and I know that you also worked in the cafeteria too, so your work is, your commitment is just very honorable. Member Snively?
I'll be brief. So I'm looking forward to reading to students this week at Reddick Elementary School. I want to thank our staff for coordinating that and giving us the opportunity to get out there into the classrooms, because like Ms. Combs says, you know, that's really where we are able to, you know, spend time with the teachers and the students and the administrators and learn. And this especially is nice to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month. Did we talk about Start With Hello? Because it's really important that we recognize Start With Hello this week. I don't know, I know in my children's schools that it started, I don't know if it's across the district, it all starts at the same time. I'm getting a nod from Chief of Schools back there, because she's got the Start With Hello t-shirt on. Right, and so I don't know if you wanted to take just a second to talk about what Start With Hello is, or whoever wants to be, whoever's comfortable talking about it, but I think it's a very wonderful program, because we teach kindness as we utilize this program throughout our schools, and making sure that children feel like they're included, that they feel that they can make friends. It recognizes that there are children who should reach out to other children if they see another student that might be in need, maybe I just explained it myself.
I'll say, you just did a wonderful job, you know, it was really good, you know...
But in the craziness that's happening today with COVID and everything, people are really stressed out and at their wits' end, and it just gives us pause to sit, to say, let's recognize other people that may be hurting or that may need a friend, and to make sure that we're all in, know that we're all in this together, and that we can all support each other and be kind to each other for most kindness.
Yes ma'am, I think you did an awesome job, just explaining it, I think you was spot-on, and thank you, because I recognize, you know, the stickers are being held out to hand out this, this morning at ISC, and Ms. Snively had one on this morning, and our chief of staff is rocking and rolling with the shirt to be able to make certain that we do say, start, take the time to understand who each other are, and be able to gain access to our students, be able to gain access to our employees, and really just to build relationships. You know, this is something that we try to work on every single day in this school district, especially during the prime time that Ms. Snively just described, and also to Mrs. Vaughn's component where the stressors continue to add up. So being able to remove the curtain, to just, you know, ask students how, and ask each other how they interact, with how they interact with their employees, how they interact with their teachers, how they, we interact with our consumers, our parents, we all need to take the time to say hello and just greet each other to build those positive relationships, it's definitely needed now, more than ever. So yes ma'am.
It really, it really is, and being very involved in the business community out in my area with the chambers of commerce, I'm going to make an ask out there, whether it's, whether you're a small business, or whether you are a nonprofit organization, or a church, or some, some organization that, that supports your local schools, you know, right now, the, the teachers obviously need a hug, they need a lot from us, but they especially need some love, but also the administrators and other faculty members need some love too. So if you are a small business, or big business, or church, or nonprofit, and you would like to maybe bring donuts in one morning, or breakfast sandwiches, or something to show your appreciation for your local school staff members, I encourage you to do that, because they, right, hopefully that's okay in COVID, I don't know, but I'm going to...
I don't know, prepackaged.
COVID land, hopefully, but they can deliver to the front door, and the front door can take, take it in, so we'll, I'm sure we'll follow all protocols, Ms. Brown, for COVID. But, but it would be a really nice gesture right now to show some love and appreciation to administration and faculty at our local schools. So don't be shy, because sometimes they don't ask, because they don't want to put, put anybody out, but we, it would be a really nice gesture for organizations and businesses to, to do something special for their local school that they support this week, or any time. That, that's it, thank you.
And Member Snively, I think every one of us can commit tonight, tomorrow, to do an act of kindness, and, and really, on our list of things to do, let's, let's do an act of kindness, and, and as many times as we can, but certainly, your message is very, very, very critical right now, and actually, it always is, it's a good personality trait. My reminders are, we have the Tampa Hispanic History Tour, October 26, and we're going to go, Aricely Martina Pena is going to share all the Hispanic origins, and that's a big deal coming up. It's joined by Donna Perino, a Tampa native, an oral historian, plus a longtime Latino community leader, and Member Combs, I know, will be joining, and board members, you're welcome to join, we'll make sure that you're invited as well. I had just a small snippet, we talk about restorative practices all the time, and sometimes it's really good to see what a school looks like when it's practicing. Some of us know about the Ron Clark Academy, but it's called also the HOUSE, and it's all about a positive culture. It's all about always thinking about acts of kindness, but learning, learning academically, physically, socially, emotionally. Pablo, do we have that? We don't have that. Okay, well, we're not going to see it, but Ms., I don't know what happened to it. Okay, so, and I'll just say this, shout out to Ms. Gina Becker from Dover Elementary, who has really put forth that effort. Big shout out, as always, to our wonderful, hard-working principals, our, our teachers who are in a, in a state of, for lack of a better word, what is the best word, between misery and desperation, and they're just very, very compromised. We're aware of that, teachers, food service, thank you, custodians, bus drivers, or ESP, social workers, counselors, our heart goes out to each of you during this time. Thank you, board members, seeing no further comments, if I'm allowed, I'm going to say adjourned.